So are we ready to go then? All right. Sorry for that again. Welcome to the Thursday, September 3rd, 2020, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. To join us, please go to the county website under Planning Commission, and it will give you instructions to join us either by telephone or through the Zoom method. And one note is, at the bottom of the instructions, please note that each Zoom meeting has a unique meeting ID and password. Any item on this agenda that is continued to a future date will use the meeting ID and password applicable to that date. The agenda item is to be heard again. Agendas are posted on the Friday before the meeting at HTTPS. I'll leave that off. Just go to the website. It's the last paragraph of the instructions, and that'll help you if you want for a continued meeting. That's just something new. So with that, I will call this meeting to order. And would you please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please, Suzanne?
Thank you. Commissioner Boncio.
Here.
Commissioner Pellegrini. Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Newman. And Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell. All right. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner McCaver.
Mayor Mellon.
Okay. I'm terrible Internet. I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Director, do we have any modifications tonight?
We have no modifications to the agenda other than there are a number of supplementals for each of the items. Those have been forwarded to all the planning commissioners. And then the item on VMT is being continued to a date uncertain.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will go to item number D, which is public comment. And this is the time for the public to comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So anybody who would like to comment, please raise your hand. To my participants, attendees. And it looks like we have a few hands up. So we're going to start with public 6670. Go ahead, please.
Hi there. This is Nadalyn, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. At the last here. Good morning, good evening. At the last hearing, one member of the public told the commission that he would be pulling all cannabis projects that had generators as part of the plan because he does not think that they are acceptable. While this is his right to do, I would like to remind the commissioners that Humboldt County has developed two cannabis land use ordinances and corresponding SEQA documents to address generator use. Those land use ordinances were developed through a robust public process with dozens of meetings and with diverse stakeholder involvement. As to generator use for cannabis farms in Humboldt County, it is more than likely that more than half of existing cannabis farms are coming into compliance, are off-grid, and require some combination of renewable and fossil fuel energy to power their homes and operations. This is why, under two ordinances, generators were allowed under the conditions that noise studies were completed, and they operate under 60 decibels, are not a nuisance to wildlife or neighbors, and follow best management practices for noise and fuel containment. Something folks might not be aware of, but all generators, regardless of whether they are powered by the sun or fossil fuels, make noise. I would like to note that many farmers are choosing to work with PG&E to bring electricity to their sites if they are close enough to the existing grid. But now back to process. If said community member thinks that the ordinance 1.0 and 2.0 need to be amended, he should follow the appropriate protocol and approach the supervisors to request that public process be reopened. It is inappropriate for planning commissioners at the behest of members of the public to direct major policy changes or amendments to existing ordinances from the diocese. Should the supervisors choose to open up a discussion on generator use, HCGA is prepared to push to have the conversation be discussed more broadly to include all generators used in rural areas in Humboldt County, not just for cannabis. And finally, I would like to address the personal attack from that said member of the public who's been pulling projects. Through the chair, if I may. Sir, I will not be bullied by you, and nor should this commission allow that type of behavior. I strongly believe in the public process and think that disagreements and civil discourse often bring about the best policy and better projects. However, to be bullied by members of the public, bullied in the same fashion our president bullies people is divisive and serves no purpose locally or nationally in civil society. I would like to thank Commissioner Mitchell for speaking up and also respectfully request that this type of behavior be admonished from our local public process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, 7454, please.
Wonderful timing, Kent Swawwowski. I am the one who pulled those, and I'm the one who referred to a certain grower as a dirtbag. I stand by my comment, and Mr. Laff has her right to her opinion. For the fact that she's accusing me of bullying is actually bullying. There is no policy to admonish or sanction the public or even you folks that I could find in the county. So I think you're kind of on the wrong track there. So I request that, and I will continue to go with the generators. She's been very misinformed. A solar generator makes no more noise than the smallest little fan you would have sometimes when it's operating under high usage. So maybe she should do a little bit of a studying into solar generators. And I think one of our commissioners there is going down that path. I did wish to make a mention. When I was asked to be admonished by Brian Allen Mitchell, I went ahead and did my due diligence. I pulled his 700 forms. And I was a little bit concerned because his business is Humboldt Healthcare, an Erickson Court in Arcata. And according to this thing, since the years of 2005 up until, let's see, March 15th of 2020, he was the CFO of a management company. Well, I couldn't find a management company, but I did find at that address, I believe it was, that he's the CFO of an Arm of Emerald Family Farms. It's my contention that this individual, Brian Allen Mitchell, your commissioner there, with all due respect, and he can correct me if this is wrong, would have, is perceived to have a conflict of interest if that's true. Insofar as being a CFO or CEO or an owner in that company and being on salary, this would be one of the few people that could not participate in this process. So I'm asking that, I'm not asking that he be sanctioned or admonished, but I do wish you to be aware of this. And of course, he can bring this forward. This is brought forward to John Ford. I didn't hear him on roll call. But it's quite possible that if he were participating tonight, he would be saying yea or nay to competitors or to some people he might be working with. Clear conflict of interest. So it also is possible that during the term that he was on here, if it does prove to be true, and I will do more due diligence to discern this, that all decisions that he participated in regarding the cannabis issue may be required to be brought back to you folks to be re-reviewed. Because obviously, since there is a perceived, perceived potential conflict here, that's the criteria that is for, is perceived. If those facts I just brought to you, or hopefully what I'm basing upon is his own Schedule C of 700 form. And of course, I don't see any reason to go FPPC now. I have asked the county to investigate this. So thank you for my opportunity to speak. And Mr. Laff, we're just going to have to disagree to agree or agree to disagree on a whole bunch of things you do out there. So thank you for my opportunity to speak. And please don't try to bully me by accusing me of being a bully.
Thank you, Kent. All I would ask is that you please be respectful of all other callers and don't use any derogatory names. You've all, I've always, you know, respected what you had to say, and I've only heard you say one thing. But I just would ask in the future that you don't call anybody by a name. But always calling, you have good, good information. Thank you. Next caller is MRBEANSVEGANIX. I'm not sure what that spells, but go ahead.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Sawyer Bogle. I'm with Mr. Bean's Veganics. I'm calling on behalf of myself and the town of Myers Flat Community. I would like to talk about the Amendment 1. Can, can we change 2,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet for this amendment? Or maybe on parcels less than an acre? Many Myers Flat community members will not have the opportunity other small farms will receive in this, if this passes, as is. Most parcels are on full, are full sun and are up to 3,000 square feet. By changing this square footage will allow applicants to make streamlined permissible pathways.
This is on the agenda. It is. I just was going to let them have it. Takes as long to stop them as to just let them speak. But this is going to be on one of our agendaized items. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So you'll have your chance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. I was just going to let, I caught it, and so did the director. But we were going to just, I was just going to let it go. But now we'll stop it.
Thank you for my time.
You're welcome. Just chime in later when it's, we're on that subject.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Next one is public 3053.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thomas Mulder here. I just want to confirm you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so first off, I want to start by thanking the Planning Commission and all staff that were involved in developing the AUD policy. It passed on Tuesday by the Board of Supervisors. And I want, sometimes I criticize, but I want to say thanks because that was a lot of work the Planning Commission put in, and the Board of Supervisors were able to go through it pretty quickly. One mild amendment I didn't necessarily agree with, but that's part of the public process. So I want to thank you all. So this next part, I did listen to the Planning Commission last week, and I was a little concerned about the generator use that was brought up. I want to remind everyone that when 1.0 was, was passed, there were SEQA documents that are related to a baseline study. That's all the generators in the hills that were operating. That's all the clearings that were done. Whether we like it or not, that was the baseline of existing use. So I feel that trying to put sanctions on operators that were the first to come in to compliance that may use fossil fuels, that I think that would be very challenging to put the message of, hey, we're going to move the goalposts again. Because I know there's something later today that's going to hopefully bring more people in, but let's try our best not to move the goalposts. Whether we like it or not, that baseline study is what was existing, and that was due to lack of regulation. So let's please think about that and realize that's covered in SEQA documentation with existing usage. It's, it's just something we really, really got to think about. And I hope as things move forward, we, we look at that. Everyone does have the right to pull different projects because of generator use. But I think we need to look at that SEQA documentation. I will tell you, as someone that does use fossil fuels, I'm in the process of PG&E. It's been a couple of years to get the process going. I'm praying to get lines in. I'm only a quarter of a mile away underground before winter. I will also tell you, there's a lack of qualified licensed electricians within the county, and it's very, very challenging to get licensed electricians lined up without having to pay an extra fee to even get them to accept your project. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Next is Redwood Region Audubon Society. You there? Redwood Region Audubon Society?
That may be me. My name is Jim Clark, and I'm a member of Redwood Region Audubon Society, but I am speaking for myself. Commissioners.
You speak about. He's talking about something on the agenda.
Okay, is this to speak on the item that's on the agenda tonight?
Not directly or specifically.
Okay, go ahead then.
Tonight's meeting finds us at a crossroads that has the potential to determine the future of cannabis in Humboldt County. The road in one direction will open our rural working landscape to industrial cannabis that will fragment the rural landscape with petroleum-dependent growing facilities run by out-of-county and out-of-state limited liability corporations, LLCs. These LLCs will be able to put the Humboldt brand on their product, even though much of the investment and most of the profit will go out of the county. The same quality cannabis could be grown with a smaller environmental footprint in an urban warehouse anywhere. Road in the other direction will encourage small, sustainable family cannabis farms that are consistent with the values of the Humboldt County brand and our respect for our rural landscape and the people that live and work in it. Continuing on our current path will result in continuing chaos that pits corporate cannabis, small family farms, and illegal cannabis against each other in a three-way competition. I urge you to make decisions that will support small-scale, sustainable family farms and discourage corporate cannabis. It's better for Humboldt County and better for the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is the last hand I see up. I see other callers, but they don't have their hands up. So with that, I will close the public comment period and move to the next item, which is the consent agenda. And today, on the consent agenda, all we have are four different action summaries to go. And I'll read, the first one is the approval of the January 9th, 2020 action summary. Do we want to do these? Let's do them all as at once. So the first one is the January 9th, 2020 action summary. The second one is review and approval of the May 7th, 2020 action summary. The third one is the May 21st, 2020 action summary. And the final one is the July 9th, 2020 action summary. Is there anybody who has any comment on these or would like them pulled from the consent agenda for discussion?
I just had a comment. I think there is a comment to the effect of that we were approving other minutes if they weren't already approved on January 9th. And I felt like that was confusing to people that would, in the future, go back and read that to be confused as to why we were approving minutes that may or may not have already been approved on January 9th. And so I was just wondering if staff could clarify why it's written that way or what we're trying to accomplish by saying it that way.
All right, Director, he'd like to comment.
Thank you, Chair. We made a correction, Commissioner Mitchell, to something that was already approved. And so we're running it back in front of you so that it can be reviewed by the commission. Apologize for the misunderstanding on that.
Okay. Then I think they're saying reapproving the minutes that were previously approved as opposed to saying approving them if they weren't already approved because the minutes from January 9th do reflect that they were approved. Does that make sense, what I'm suggesting?
Yes, I, I get it. If I, do any other commissioners have any questions on that? I think that's fine. Well, I, I'll open this up for public comment if there's any. No? I mean, I don't see anybody. There's nobody, so do I have a motion to approve?
Alan, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes in the consent calendar, all four of them, as amended.
I will second that. I will third it.
We have a first, second, and a third. Any comment? Suzanne, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Boncio.
Yes.
And Commissioner Pellegrini. Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman. Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
And Commissioner McCaver.
Yes.
Thank you.
The action carries. So we'll move on to item F, which is items pulled from consent. And we didn't have any, so we'll move on to item G, which is continued public hearings. And the first item is the cannabis ordinance amendments for small cultivators, personal use, and financial security. And we'll take a staff report, please.
Good evening. My name's Lana Adler. I'm the assigned planner for this project. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay, let me share my screen and let's start the PowerPoint. So tonight, we will discuss three different cannabis ordinance amendments that is part of this project. They include the small cultivator, the personal use, and financial security. Tonight, I'll give a brief staff report that will review the amendments to the ordinances, Planning Commission, and all, a Planning Commission alternative, and public comments that we've received. So our first amendment to cannabis ordinances is an amendment we have called the Small Cultivator Amendment to the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, or the CCLUO. This is a streamlined permitting pathway for 2,000 square feet for new or pre-existing cannabis farms. It has minimal permit requirements. It's a zoning clearance certificate, so it's a ministerial permit. No road and permit requirement will be associated with this permit. Approval will be within 30 days unless the applicant has been notified of, in writing of specific deficiencies, and the permit costs are fixed. So in order to provide this streamlined permit, we have included some amendments to ensure minimal environmental impact as part of potential future cannabis activities. So we have included a requirement that homes, the cannabis cultivation will occur adjacent to homes that were existing prior to December 31st, 2016. There's no clearing of trees. The cultivation type is outdoor without the use of any generators. Irrigation is only allowed to be permitted non-diversionary sources, and permaculture practices are required. So things like no imported soils, use of organic fertilizers, pesticides, and insecticides, rodenticides, that kind of thing. Our second amendment to ordinances has to do with outdoor cultivation of cannabis for personal use on small parcels. So this is a clarification of a zoning ordinance that is kind of a cleanup item. There was no place in our zoning ordinance currently that addressed personal or medical use of cultivation on parcels larger than five acres. Currently, the ordinance allows up to 100 square feet of cultivation for parcels, one acre or less, or, and then up to 200 square feet of cultivation for parcels between one and five acres. So the proposed amendment is to allow up to 400 square foot of cultivation area on parcels over five acres. And then last amendment that we'll discuss will, is the Financial Security Amendment. This is, this is to better align the CCLUO with the requirements of the county's cannabis tax ordinance. And this will ensure timely payment of taxes yearly and provide the following options. So if an applicant is not a property owner, either a cash, bond, or property owner agreement is required. If an applicant is a property owner, agreement to pay taxes is required. We've also included an alternative for the planning commissioners for the personal use amendment. If there's a recommendation for a smaller or larger amount of cultivation area on parcels greater than five acres in size, we have included that as an alternative to the 400 square feet that we have included in the amendment. We've received some public comments on these ordinance amendments. And just to kind of summarize, we've received support for the small cultivator addition to the CCLUO. There's been support and clarification and requests for some changes for the personal use amendment. We did conduct tribal consultation meetings, both Zoom meetings, communication by email and phone with Big Rock, Bear River, Blue Lake, Weah, and Kruk Tribe. And they've expressed agreement on the Planning Commission hearing draft that is in front of you this evening. And we have a supplemental item that we've provided to the commissioners. And I do have a link to that table. What we've done is basically summarized the public comments that we've received and our staff responses to those comments. We have made amendments to some of the ordinance amendments. So some changes to some of the, to the Small Cultivator Ordinance Amendment. These changes included the striking of generators for electrical use. So that will probably be clearer when we look at the ordinance language itself. We have deleted the onsite nursery definition that just kind of brought up some questions and, and confusion. So we've, we've deleted that definition altogether. We've clarified some of the per, permaculture standards. And then we also struck out some language of, it said full sun, outdoor, or outdoor. So we've just struck out full sun, outdoor, or. So it just reads outdoor, just to make that clear. We didn't make any changes to the personal use amendments or the financial security amendments based on the public comments that we received. That pretty much, that summarizes my staff report. And if we want to link to this supplemental item and discuss the public comments a little bit further, that was a, that was our plan to do so. We have a significant amount of comments. So I'll do my best to kind of get through these and highlight some of the ones that did, did bring up some really good points or did result in some changes to the ordinances. So we did send out referrals on these ordinance amendments. The Department of Environmental Health did respond with some requests for additional standards. And so the first one had to do with the fertilizer pesticide mixing. And this really is, is kind of a bigger item that should be, look, basically outside that CCLUO and just be part of the county health and safety code. There was also a request to ensure properly functioning sewage disposal system. We, staff's response to this is that We, staff's response to this is that we currently have a distinction that separates between cannabis cultivation and existing residences. So, for example, we have some provisional permitting limit or require, conditional agreements that, that do not extend to personal residences. So we didn't make any changes to the ordinances as a result of these comments. Although they're good comments, they do belong, they, they should be a part of the overall permitting scheme for cannabis cultivation. We did have-
Can I interrupt for a second?
Of course.
First of all, we're, we're not seeing the supplemental item. Somehow the link isn't working. And then, and then the other thought I had is, I'm not sure we want to walk through all five pages of comments. Were you going to abbreviate the comments that we've got, or how are you intending to handle that?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's a really good point. That's too bad that this link didn't, didn't work. I apologize for that. I was going to try to walk through this quickly, but you know, you're right, there's five pages and-
This is, this is Noah, and, I mean, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I was really appreciating Laura's summary of these comments. So I can't see them. It would be good if we could see them. And yes, of course, try to abbreviate them, but I, I really do appreciate you trying to give us the high points of the comments.
Okay, okay, great. I'll, I'll do my best here. So, so for those that ca- so I guess we can't see these. What we tried to do was we grouped them into the, so these are comments that are associated with the small cultivator amendment. We did receive some requests for things like allowing operators to process an agribusiness building. We didn't recommend that based on the, the fact that that would require amendment to the building code, which was really beyond the scope of this item. This also discussed that we had a tribal historic preservation officer comment, and that we addressed those in a meeting with them, which we kind of covered already. We did have requests that we, we strike the generators used for electrical power. We did go ahead and make that change to the ordinance, and also there was a concern about the onsite nursery. We also made that change to the ordinance that I highlighted earlier. And then we had a, a kind of a set of comments that really wanted to be, a lot of the scope of the, the changes that we made to the small, oh, maybe, can you possibly see my screen now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Fantastic. It, it kind of started, it looks like, here.
It worked.
Let's see if I have control of it. Here we go. How fantastic.
You guys can work as a team.
It's just moving a little slow, so I apologize. I'm trying to kind of move down the page here.
Lana, where do you want it at, and I'll move it.
So I was going to go down to the base, the bottom of page two here. Oh, great. So we received some comments on the small cultivator amendment that, that really hoped to extend to the other permitting types in the CCLUO, and that was beyond the scope of what we were looking to achieve here. Additionally, let's see, so we're back on page one, it looks like. Uh-oh. A little technical difficulty here. Maybe if we could go to page three, I think that would be. Okay. Great. I think that's where we need to be. So these are some changes that we did make to the ordinance. If we can keep going down a little bit more, John, that would be great. Keep going to, yeah. Next page. It, it seems like it kind of keeps wanting to go back up. And yeah, we, and then we were kind of asked to kind of clarify some things. So we, we did our best to clarify things like permaculture definitions. Looks like we're to the personal use, which is our second ordinance amendment. This documents me a little. And will be.
Lana, where do you want to be?
Page, the, the, page three. Or actually, yeah, it's not consistent on the page numbers. The next one down, John, I'm sorry. I apologize. It looks like there's two different page numerations there.
Are we having two different meetings here?
I can maybe just summarize this briefly, that, you know, people wanted to see, I think, a little bit more extensive changes as part of the amendments to the ordinances. And we really wanted to keep the scope to that of the intended amendments. You know, in, in, in saying that, you know, for the small cultivator, we wanted, you know, to provide some specific permitting pathways for that particular permit type. For the personal use, we were really looking to make some changes to clarify on parcels greater than five acres, what that cultivation area should be. And then finally, on the financial securities, we had, generally, the public comment was in opposition of, of the amendments to the ordinances. And so, you know, there wasn't much in specific changes to the ordinance, ordinance amendments other than to, you know, say that, you know, people were generally in opposition of, of those changes. So I think that pretty much summarizes the public comments that we received. So, yeah, if there's any questions or clarifications, we'd be happy to, to answer those.
I have a question. So does this, does, can one person get multiple small permits and cultivate on other parcels that they don't own? Or is this just for an owner resident type of situation? Or could I just go out and find a bunch of people that have a house that they built before 2016 and just take out permits in several locations? Or does it have to be my parcel and I have to live there?
So are you, are you asking in regard to the per- to the small cultivator, the 2,000 square foot?
Yes.
Or an amendment? Yeah, so that would have to be an owner occupied property that would be allowed the one cannabis permit on that property.
And why is it that people that don't have a house as of December 31st, why are they being excluded? Because I mean, like 20 years into the future, you're going to have this date. I guess you could always come back and try to amend it. But I always, it kind of bothers me that those people that have followed the law and, you know, done everything that they're supposed to do, kind of get left out. And it seems like everything's written for people that are already there, already doing something. And why couldn't someone have a permit and build a house next year, today? What's, why?
Well, the, I think that the, the intent was to minimize the environmental impact. So the thought was if someone owned a ha- you know, had a house and was living in that residence, that it would not increase the environmental impact of, you know, driving to that parcel, living on that property. It, it would be the, by allowing for an expedited, expedited permitting pathway, we wanted to reduce the environmental impact and, and that-
You've already, we have so many environmental impacts right now.
Director would like to chime in.
If, if I could, thanks. What, what Lana said is, is, is partially true. But then the bigger part of the story really has to do with the concerns that have been expressed that the way the ordinance was, or ordinances have been written and implemented has excluded the small heritage, traditional cultivator. And what this is really trying to do is get back to what many people consider are the roots of Humboldt County, which is a small cultivator on their homestead, being able to get into the permit process and not having obstacles to their being able to participate in the legal system.
And I'm pulling apart that concept. I think it's, you know, a great concept, but I don't think people should be excluded because they didn't have a house in December. I think it's a, it's a good way for someone to make an income and, and be a resident and, and live in the community as opposed to being this large cultivator. I think this is, you know, a, a good thing. I just don't think people should be excluded because they didn't have a house on December 31st, 2016. That's my opinion.
Any other questions for staff? Mike? Go ahead, Mike.
Yep, I just had to unmute myself, find my mouse to get the unmuting process. I have a question regarding the financial agreements. I was looking at the amended changes, and basically they were saying they're addressed because if you have a written agreement from the property owner, you know, you're renting that property. Is it spelled out exactly what that has to have in that agreement? That's question number one. Question two, along the same lines, is, did staff investigate, are there bonds available for sale for this type of thing?
I'll, I'll take a shot at that. So with respect to the first question relative to if the property owner is in agreement to taking on the responsibility of taxes, we don't have a form for that yet, but will, assuming this is, is adopted. And, and so there would just be a, a form that the property owner would say, indicating that they understand that they're taking on the responsibility for the property taxes.
So can I just ask you a quick question on that? So that would then say that that property owner would be deemed needing to pay that tax if the renter does not pay it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Second?
And so the second question had to do with whether or not bonds are available. And bonds are difficult to get for cannabis cultivation. There is no doubt about that.
So why do we put that in there as an option?
So we put that in there as an option, basically because there need to be options for applicants to satisfy the, the need to demonstrate that they're not going to get a run or two and then leave the property. In most cases, the, the prop is worth more than-
Quite a bit right there.
What's that?
You cut out.
Yeah, you were-
I couldn't understand your last part that you were saying.
I'm sorry. I, I made the point that what we're trying to do is give applicants and/or property owners options. And so one option is either for the applicant to be the property owner or the applicant to have the property owner sign that agreement. If they do that, there's no need for a bond or a cash deposit. Secondarily, we were looking for a mechanism that would allow an applicant to be able to demonstrate their intent to pay the taxes. And, you know, a usual method is a bond, and while bonds are difficult to get right now, they're not impossible. And, and the other option is, is basically a, a cash deposit upfront.
I, I just wanted to make sure it was, it was understood that those bonds are virtually impossible to get.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, I had one, Alan.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions as well, along the same lines as Commissioner O'Neill and what we just heard. I, I'm wondering why the, the overall allowance wasn't the same given that the environmental impacts are similarly low. I can't really see, I, I mean, I kind of see the rationale, maybe, you know, because it would fill your landscape or what have you, but I just don't see it. And so I see it as an accessibility issue for people who don't have as much land, kind of along the lines of the bonds, you know, the cash available. And my second question is, what happens if someone with one of these decides to sell and, and then buy another property? Do they take that permit with them? Or does it stay with the property? Can they pass it on if they sell the property? Thanks.
Sure. So as you're aware, permits run with the property, not with an applicant. An applicant does own an application, but the permit is issued to a property, so it, it's not transferable to another property. So it either stays there or, and is transferred to another future buyer, or it is expired. And then I think, if I understood your first question correctly, relative to why the 2,000 square feet? Is, is that what we're addressing?
Yeah, I was just curious as to why we don't have the allowance, you know, the same for, for all sizes of property.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
I think she means the personal use, the 400 square feet versus 200 versus 100. Is that what you mean?
Yes, that's, that, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So in the personal use of, just to refresh the commission's memory, that's a separate provision in the zoning ordinance. And for properties that are under an acre, they get up to 100 square feet of cultivation. For properties between one and five acres, they get 200 square feet. Currently, properties over five acres, it says nothing. It gives no guidance. So the way that we've been addressing that is just defaulting to the state requirement, which is six plants. What this would do is set a requirement of 400 square feet or whatever recommendation the planning commission wants to make relative to that as the, the threshold that the county would allow on a five acre or larger parcel for personal cultivation. This is not commercial cultivation. This is strictly personal use.
Okay, thank you. And, I mean, I still-
Can I bring up?
Yeah.
Sorry. The, the- I, I'm sorry, Melanie. I just wanted to say that the 400 square feet is, is a bit arbitrary. And so if the commission, you know, wants to find a different number, that's certainly within the realm of, of appropriateness.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I know we are constrained by, you know, state and, and, you know, a lot of things. But I was just seeing it through the lens of accessibility, you know, since we are talking about making more of this field available- making more of this field available to people who have less of things, whether that be land or money, and hoping we could come up with something that is as fair as possible.
Go ahead, John.
So I just want to make it really abundantly clear that the personal use has no permit requirement either. And it is strictly for personal use. It's not for commercial sales. And so that is a distinct difference there. Whereas the small farmer amendment is really to allow people who have earned an income from or at least a secondary income from cultivation. That gives them the ability to get into the commercial regulatory system.
Yes, thank you, Director. Yeah, I was more referring to my first comment question in terms of accessibility. On the other hand, I mean, you know, if it is personal use and it's the same number of people in the household, you know, how how much more would they really be using? I mean, I know we can't go there because we have to just deal with the regulations, but. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Melanie. I see Noah has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just be really brief because I know there's a lot of people on the call. I'd love to hear from the public on this, but I just want to say a couple of things. First, I really want to commend the department for taking on this issue and trying to to make a clear, easier pathway for small scale, what we might call heritage commercial cultivators. I see that as the intent very clearly of the main thing here and I and I'm glad to see that. And I also really thank Lana for, even though there were some technical difficulties for trying to walk us through what some of the comments were and what the department's response was. And on that note, I just wanted to say, you know, a couple of the people who I consider to be some of the best commenters in the public in terms of having followed and shaped our public process the whole way through while we've been, you know, building this plane in midair, people like Ed Denson and Thomas Mulder. They raised issues that are a little bit outside the scope of what we're doing here tonight. And I understand that we cannot amend the, you know, building code and we are not doing a whole scale amendment to other parts of the cannabis ordinance. So I guess I just wanted to flag that, that there's some good input that came in that we couldn't really address within the scope of this item and ask the director if there, I mean, you know, is there going to be another opportunity to maybe take a more global reevaluation of the way this is working, the way some parts of it fit together or don't that could encompass some of those broader comments that we received?
Go ahead, Director.
So thank you, Chair and Commissioner Levy. Yes, we can take a look at those. And we are beginning to struggle with some of those very things, particularly related to accessory buildings, not only for commercial cannabis, but also for residential use. And so those are also things that will be coming forward in the near future.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands and Noah just said he'd like to hear some public comment. I think we will open it up to the public now and get that public comment. So let me get over to attendees. The first caller would be Mike G., please. Go ahead, Mike.
Everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you guys for having this meeting tonight. And yeah, you know, as a citizen of Humboldt County for the last 20 years, I am a I have great consternation, you know, as far as the uncertain future of Humboldt County, you know, the the citizens of our county are slowly suffering as our community reaches rapidly reaches a tipping point that I fear that will be impossible to turn around. The proposed new amendments to establish personal use allowances for larger parcels, I don't feel is adequate to address the our community's medicinal needs. The, just as a reminder, you know, the Compassionate Use Act of 1996 giving medicinal entitlements to California residents has not gone away. In fact, Prop 64 and MACURSA continues to allow qualified patients and designated caregivers, which can be for more than one person, to cultivate cannabis appropriate for our medicinal needs and the needs of our patients. This does not limit us to square footage or plant count on the state level. With the regulations for licensed commercial cannabis businesses, unfortunately, compassion has been mostly forgotten, I fear. I feel like we must preserve our rights to provide care for our patients and our community in need. Cannabis can be grown for a fraction of the price, you know, of commercial bought at legal dispensaries. And with many patients that they just simply cannot or can, this, I feel like we must create a compassionate path forward to allow for our talented cultivators the opportunity to fill this void. So my proposal essentially is that on parcels greater than five acres in total size, we allow for up to 200 square feet of cultivation area per qualified patient who resides at the property or qualified patient designated to a primary caregiver who resides at the property, not to exceed a total of 1,200 square feet. I think that will just that will basically allow caregivers the opportunity to provide cannabis for patients in need. These are very troubling economic and sociological times. I feel like we must pass policies that embrace and empower our community in every way imaginable, instead of limiting our compassion to neighbors, families and friends. Creating and enforcing arbitrary rules is in nobody's best interest. Cannabis can be grown for a fraction of the cost of store bought medicine. And with many patients choosing to medicate with edibles and tinctures, which require substantially more raw material produced, the proposed new limits will not be sustainable. I can only hope that we now realize that the abatement program that's so cleverly designed to penalize the most egregious violators have been being used to torment and displace our cottage community, which I feel is unacceptable and unethical. Please do not place corporate interests above compassion. This is something that Humboldt County simply cannot afford. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Your comments. Next caller is Mr. Bean from Meyer Flat, Meyer Flats. Go ahead.
Yes, hello. Thank you again. So, yes, my name's Sawyer Bogle. I'm here with Mr. Beans Veganics. I just would like to, you know, say that the 2,000 square feet, you know, 3,000 square feet is still small and, you know, it would really help our community, you know, as far as the being streamlined and permissible through the pathway of this ordinance. I just really think that if we could change the 3,000 square feet, it will help the whole town. And I just really appreciate you guys being here and even talking about this and having this up because I've been wanting something like this for a long time now. You know, it really helps us small farmers to know that we can we can pretty much have a vertical system here and that really helps. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next caller is Public 3053. 3050, go ahead.
Good evening, Thomas Mulder. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first off, I'm going to thank the director and staff. I know since ordinance 2.0 has been passed, I've been asking for a lot of these things before you tonight. I want to clarify something. I think where the staff and the director has gone with the 2,000 square foot limit for the personal cottages because that keeps water board out of all the play as well as the non diversionary water source gets DFW out of the play. So it makes it easy to pass CEQA to get through the process quicker. That's what my belief is, is why that's there. I want to hone in on my email I sent in, allowing somehow allowing in a 10 by 12 building or whatever and onsite processing for these small cultivators, allowing them, they can, they have no employees, they can clock out, they can go inside their permitted residence and wash their hands and worry about sanitary practices, as I stated in the email. Processing is 7 to 15% of your gross. And when you're, if you're paying an employee for that, you're only looking at getting 5 to 11% of your gross. So if you can add that 7 to 15% onto these cottage farmers, I think it's a better chance of having them succeed, especially if you put the craft back into it where it's mom and pop, they craft a small batch. So I really, really want you to try to hone in on that. As far as the personal use, you've seen my comments. I would like to see it go up to 500 square feet. I understand it's pushed, give and take. I like, I'm happy it went up to 400 square feet after my first comment. The question I had is this, is there a way a neighbor can, the neighboring residences within X amount of feet can sign a waiver for the neighbor to cultivate within the setbacks? Or is that just a complaint driven thing? I haven't gotten clarification on that. And my last one is on the taxes. Unlike most others, I believe I'm not opposed to it as long as I have clarification. And I believe I heard the director say that earlier. I technically own a corporation that leases to land I own as long as me as the landowner signs an agreement that I'm liable for the corporation's miseres taxes. And that's okay. And there's no bond needed or cash deposit. I do not oppose the tax portion. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Next speaker is Kelly Flores.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this. Yes, my name is Kelly Flores. I'm with Margarade Advisors and we've spent the past four years assisting local farmers in this compliance process. So I'm here to speak to you today to state our firm opposition to the bond requirement in the proposed Financial Security Amendments Ordinance because it would require paid security bonds from legal cannabis farmers to ensure payment of the county excise tax. Now, to be clear, we're not opposed to signing agreements between the owners and operators to clarify the liability of the tax. But the bond requirement demonstrates that this ordinance essentially makes the assumption that legal taxpaying cannabis farmers are expected to be delinquent in paying their excise tax. And this proposed requirement does not exist for other types of farmers. So it shows to us that the county's ongoing bias against those who have the courage to willingly traverse these many challenges that exist in this path to legal permitting licensure and the ongoing compliance. So please understand that these trials and tribulations continue to be difficult. From track and trace, multi-agency annual reporting, increasing fish and wildlife requirements, it's difficult to obtain a basic county business license. And there's this multitude of agency related annual fees that these farmers already endure. For the county to add a bond requirement as an additional expense and process is in the ongoing compliance is just an additional burden to these farmers. And we feel it's incredibly unfair and short sighted. For all taxpayers, there's late penalties that already exist for those who fail to pay on time. And cannabis farmers who don't pay their taxes already put their permit at risk. And the county permits are not renewed without those taxes being paid. So if you believe that these penalties are insufficient, then the bond should only be required for repeat offenders who failed to pay. Essentially, we're saying punish the bad actors if you must, but don't punish those who really deserve our support, who have the courage to weather these ongoing challenges in a highly regulated market. Really, to do otherwise is not in the best interest of our community. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next caller is Public 9161. You there, 9161?
Hi, yes, yes. Thank you for having me. My name is Mariah Miranda. And I also want to thank staff for listening to the public and for Lana for including those comments in her presentation. I wanted to speak a little bit about, first of all, yeah, thanking you guys for thinking about the small farmers because that really is the heart of our rural community. I still have concerns about medical marijuana and the planning department. Currently, the way they regulate with code enforcement, with the aerial photos and their practice of not fact checking the aerial photos. Not to make this about me too much, but I did get abated for having a medical garden in 2018. And then I didn't even have plants in the ground. And when I went in to talk to my planner, I was told medical marijuana hasn't existed since 2016. So for me, that communicated that once cannabis became legal, medical did not. And that I was like, no, I have this note from my doctor. Here's my stuff. There was no looking at it. There was no conversation. It did not exist. And when I said, no, I have these, he says, that's because people like you will pay for them. So there was no room for medical marijuana in that conversation. So I want to end with a comment from Ed Denson on Kim Kemp on an opinion piece. Number seven, he says, if the board believes that driven by need or greed, medical patients might sell their medicine, society has a way to deal with that. Criminal laws enforced by the sheriff, rather than reduce legal medicine to sick people, increase the sheriff's budget and leave the crime stopping to people trained to do it. Using civil law to preemptively prevent crime is a perversion of good judgment, of good government in the justice system, quote, it is better than 10 than the one innocent person be convicted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Moto G. Six play.
This is Brian Roberts. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
I'm calling because thank you for taking my call. I'm calling about one medical marijuana. I was a medical marijuana farm and now I am a legal cannabis farm. But under a medical marijuana farm, I grew 99 plants for my grandmother. She lived from 91, when she was supposed to die, to 99, all because she stopped taking pharmaceuticals. And we took 99 plants, reduced it down into medicine, and she lived on that for nine years. So when you say 2,000 square feet for small farmers, that's fantastic. But for medical farmers, they need to be able to grow their amount of medicine they need to survive, not to make money, but survive. So this is a compassionate issue. And just like the caller before, I'm a bit disturbed because how much of the building and planning department did we educate these planners? A lot of them give misinformation since 2016. Even today, they continue to give misinformation. So my question is, Director Ford, did you do any planning and training for these employees? Or are they just left on their own to decide situations for each individual person? Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, Holly Carter.
Hi, happy to have you. Thank you for putting the work together. I know that
You're breaking up really bad.
No, I don't have a lot of time.
I'm sorry, Holly. We can't even hear what you're saying.
I would say let her redial back.
Let her redial. Yeah, okay, thank you. Next caller is Nataline.
Hey there. Good evening, Natalie from Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Just want to say thank you to the planning department and, you know, thank you to Supervisor Madrone, who has really championed the development of the Small Farmer Land Use Ordinance over the past couple of years. That we think that this is a really great opportunity for the heritage farmers to have the opportunity to come into compliance with commercial cultivation. And, you know, very open to the public process and what's going to be developed by the Planning Commission and the public as we thread the needle to make this land use ordinance work for the public and for the environment. As to the financial component for the amendment, the written agreements, I would just put a little addition that it's a one time agreement with the landowner unless otherwise stated that the landowner would like to revoke it so that we know that it's just a one time permission that needs to be given until otherwise. And that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Public 5288. You there, Public 5288?
I am. Kent Swawwski. I bring my usual technical difficulties. Fortunately, I'm
I am. Kent Swawwicky, bringing my usual technical difficulties. Fortunately, I'm back with you. Um, how come I always have to speak after her? Don't know. Uh, must be a coincidence. So I did wish to make a comment regarding the earlier request that I not use the term that I used. And of course, respect is earned and I strongly suspect, uh, your Chair Alan Bondjo, so I will comply with that. In the future, I will just describe what the, was brought forward and, uh, what staff brought forward and it was in the staff report. I do wish to also make a point at this time, it would be really beneficial if staff were to do their due diligence when such accusations were made on that particular project to validate or verify those and, and tell us whether they're true or not, because that I think is what the public bases their opinion on. So regarding this particular topic, uh, I do strongly support what Steve Madrone and, and Mr. Mulder and other people and staff have brought forward on this. I did have a question for you and I, I didn't get an answer. Um, I think I had a call in, I meant to, to John Ford was, uh, basically, is this an over the counter permit for 2,000 square foot of grow? And does that apply within, within your, uh, community areas, your area planning areas? Because if, if you have somebody who's in a, in a situation where, like Blue Lake, where we have, uh, it has to be fully contained, no odor in your yard, and yet right over your fence happens to be the county and you have multiple 2,000 foot grows, uh, adjacent to your property, we may be impacted. So I would like to have clarification from that particular topic. Uh, ask your staff if possible, if my scenario is possible. And if so, I'm going to ask to avoid the conflicts we've had regarding, uh, odor and I, you know, we, we can agree to disagree on whether it's offensive or not. Uh, I think it would be best to leave that up to the jurisdiction to determine. In other words, thumbs up or thumbs down. In other words, if you are going to grant this permit, they would be contacted and required to say, yes, we feel that it's appropriate to have that permit. Not just they didn't respond, nothing like that, but a yes. And therefore you have a community buy-in. And I think that's probably the most important thing that all of these things. But other than that, fantastic idea. It's about time, uh, I've supported a small growers forever. And, uh, and thank you so much for bringing it forward. But I do request that scenario and question be asked of your staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And if, if it is so, that you put a caveat in there where the, uh, community planning areas have thumbs up or down. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kent. And now we'll get back to Holly. See if we have a better connection. Go ahead, Holly. Are you there, Holly? Uh, I guess not. Yeah, I don't know. Well, maybe she decided not to. She says, she shows she's there, but. Holly, can you hear me? Go ahead and unmute yourself and speak if you can.
Do we need to maybe, is she on a phone or what?
Yeah. Oh, there, something just changed. There we go.
Hello?
Are you there? Yes.
You hear this at all?
Yes, that's.
Okay, I have very odd technical setup. I was trying to be on the phone, so I apologize for that. And thank you all for your patience tonight with me. And I want to also thank the staff and, um, specifically the chapters written, the chapter for, we just, we have had some internet conversations and about, you know, um, what kind of support could be offered to the smallest cultivators? One thing that I know is missing in this, and perhaps it can be something we come back to, is more zoning types that we're looking at a baseline of, uh, impact that has already happened and we're looking to support small cultivators. Um, I would like to see additional zoning type added, the types of zoning that are here now. Although super supportive on the timeline to be able to get people permitted, um, I, I fear does still leave some options on the desk, um, into the future. And I want to, um, thank the commissioner who asked the question about removing the date, um, for, to be able to keep the option open moving into the future. In terms of the financial bond request, I want to echo what Ms. Flores had said. I also want to bring up that our county collects three types of taxes that are special taxes right now. We collect the transit, the cannabis tax and property tax. This is the only tax that would be asked to have kind of bond or forward payment. Um, there's nothing imposed like that. And there are not super dissimilar rates of delinquency in the property tax. I was not able to ask to achieve, um, data on the transit occupancy tax delinquency, but those businesses are not asked to pay anything. And I also want to bring up on that part that when the adjustment was made from the S collection time from pre, previous to the growing year to after the growing year, there was intent language in that. And I was struggling to find that online tonight. Again, I apologize for not being able to have it prepared to read. But the intent language, as I recall, in the chambers, um, was to support small farmers and in the recognition of the owner's need to enter in the marketplace. It will not, that has not changed. Um, and then the other piece that hasn't changed is, you know, we've been working towards transitioning our community and when we continue to see people and businesses who are, um, you know, evolving as though they are committing a crime or suspended, suspicious of committing a crime. And this is not the only agency who does that. It is a cultural shift that we need to make. And once again, I'm going to ask Humboldt County to be leaders on that. So I would like to ask you to remove this, um, lean and, um, burden, financial burden and lean into the options that are present, which are, um, suspension or revocation of a permit. So should somebody fall very far behind, um, at very least notification, which is required already. If someone is not in good standing with their county and their local organization, there's notification requirements to the state agency. Um, so there are already implications in place. We do not need to add further implications. We do not need to actually, quite frankly, and I wrote this in my letter, add more requirements for the planning department to attack. Things are getting smoother, but they're not there yet.
Wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing no more callers, I'm going to close the public comment and I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Uh, the director would like to address some of the issues that, uh, were asked. And so we'll let him speak and then we'll have more questions. Go ahead, Director.
Yeah. First of all, I, I wanted to say that both the personal use provisions and the, uh, small farmer amendments are separate from medical use. The provisions for a medical caregiver are entirely separate. Um, Thomas Mulder was absolutely correct. The 2,000 square foot limitation is related to the water board, um, exemptions. So a small cultivator would not have to, uh, go through that process. In terms of the property owner sign, signing the agreement saying that, uh, they would be responsible for the taxes, um, that precludes the need for a bond or a surety. And also as the other question that was asked is that is, um, something that is done just one time? Um, in response to the, uh, is this an over the counter permit? Uh, while we did want to make this an over the counter permit, we did not see a way to effectively do that. Um, because the way the ordinances are structured is that we really still do need to coordinate with the tribes and also with CDFW. So there's no way to do it over the counter. It is a, a, a zoning clearance certificate that needs to come in. That's why we put the provisions in that it would be issued within 30 days so that there, there is a, um, a deadline for the department to get it processed. That's the, the best that we could do under those circumstances. And then this does not, absolutely not supersede the community planning area provisions. The community planning area provisions would still apply. I think that those are the high points. Michael, did I miss anything?
You got it all right. Um, there is a section in this, um, proposed small farmer ordinance that says as long as a special permit or conditional use permit is not otherwise required, the applications shall be processed as a zoning clearance certificate. And so in the community plan areas, either a use permit or a special permit is, uh, required, um, for designated community plan areas. And so those would kick it out of being able to be processed as a zoning clearance certificate.
Thanks. Thanks, Michael. One of the, uh, things that I did want to address, um, is that in terms of pre-existing cultivation, this does reopen the door for those pre-existing cultivators who qualified to, to be able to apply. And, uh, in terms of the number of zoning districts where they're allowed, this would allow pre-existing cultivators in TPZ and, um, which is the primary zone that's an issue right now. Uh, so that those folks who have traditionally cultivated there can get a permit to cultivate at that location. That's all we got.
Thank you, Director. Uh, so we'll bring this back to the commission. Any questions from the commission to staff?
I, I would just support not having the bond. I, I've had to get these bonds for projects and you end up having to put it a hundred percent cash on deposit and then pay to have that money on deposit, uh, several thousand dollars a year. You didn't get any interest on your money. And that sometimes is the only way you can get a bond. And so I think that's unreasonable to put that on someone. If, if you're cultivating on some property and you can't get the owner to sign an agreement, then you don't have any business being there in the first place, I don't think. Um, it's not a very trusting relationship. And I would still, that people who have followed the law should not be precluded from, um, not being these small cultivators. If they want to live on the land and pay property tax on a home that they build tomorrow, then they should be able to, um, be a small cultivator if that's the way they can make a living. Um, I don't like these arbitrary dates that just exclude, you know, people that may have lived in this county for their entire life and they now want to become a cultivator because it's legal to be one. And, and we've rewarded people who did it when it wasn't legal. But we exclude people that, you know, have followed the rules in the past. It seems like every time we do something.
Thank you, Peggy. The, I see Noah has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, well, just to respond to Commissioner O'Neill's point, I, I think I agree. Um, I, I don't really see a good logical justification for requiring this provision to only apply to those who had a house, you know, by the end of 2016. Um, the point that I wanted to, to clarify though, and I think, I think Thomas Mulder brought it up, um, because it's just, it's a small detail, but it matters. Uh, I'm unclear about whether the, the encroachment issue on a property line, um, is that something that can, and again, leaving aside the, the community plan issues, which I think we've already, we've already talked about, um, uh, community plan rules apply where there's a community plan. Where there's not a community plan though, can, can a neighbor give a waiver to his or her neighbor to encroach within the setback? You know, that, that's, that's what I feel like we've, we've had this discussion and I'm not totally clear where the, where the rules come out on that.
Would you like to?
Yeah. So we're not changing the setback waiver requirements from Watson to CCLU. Those provisions apply. And I'm looking for those right now.
Any other questions? Commission?
If I could jump in, um, the comment from Thomas Mulder, I believe, um, was in regard to not the CCLU amendments, the small farmer amendments, but to the personal use amendments and those.
Yeah, sorry. I should have been more clear that that's what I was referring to actually. Yeah.
Yeah, those, those, uh, that part of the ordinance was drafted before the CCLU. And it doesn't include that same level of nuance that the CCLU contains. And so, uh, it, it says, uh, if you've got a large parcel, five acres, um, one to five acres, it's got to be, um, 40 feet, or I'm sorry, uh, 20 feet. If it's smaller than that, it's got to be 40 feet. And, um, and I think your, your commission could recommend that you pull into the, uh, personal use allowances, a waiver provision just like the, uh, the one that's in the CCLU. I think that's a, a fair, um, recommendation.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? Melanie, I see you have your hand up.
I just wanted to say that I also support what, um, Commissioner O'Neill brought up. Thanks.
All right. Any others? Seen none. Are we have an action on this or is this just?
This is a recommendation to the board, so it does require a, uh, a, a motion and a vote.
All right. If we have no more questions, anybody want to make a motion on this? Anyone? Go ahead, Melanie.
So it's a, it's a question for the, the director, I guess. So if we were to make a motion suspecting that most of us want to see, uh, the requirement of the bonds removed, I'm assuming you would need that as a condition of approval?
You could make that as part of your motion, or you could continue and ask us to bring it back. I, I would like, well, I always like to move things forward. So I'm going to say it's really up to you what you want to do. And so if, if you want to us to bring back the revised language, you can continue it to the meeting of September 17th and we'll bring back revised language for you to consider. Or you could make a motion that would include direction to remove the provisions for the bond language.
Okay. And so, I mean, I, I think that we could just go ahead since it's not really language dependent so much. Okay. Well, I can make that motion then. Um, I'll motion to approve the cannabis ordinance amendments for small cultivators, personal use and financial security case numbers, PLN 2020 16447, 16571, 16479, uh, with the, uh, condition that we remove the requirement for bonds.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll start again. This is Brian.
Hi, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Any discussion on the motion in the second?
Could I ask for clarification?
Yeah.
Could I ask for clarification?
The director liked clarification on something. Go ahead.
Commissioner McVor, by bonds, are you including both the cash surety and the bond or just the bond?
Um, I was under the impression that most of the commission was in favor I was under the impression that most of the Commission was in favor of removing all of them, but perhaps that would be something for discussion?
Any, Noah, go ahead. You have your hand up.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I mean, I'm, you know, generally very in favor of this. But on the bond question, I think it might just warrant a little bit more discussion. I thought Kelly Flores was persuasive in what she said about mentioning how many other financial hurdles there already are going through this process. On the other hand, and I know this is kind of an obscure and in the weeds point, it seems to only apply and pose a burden to those applicants where the landowner doesn't sign off, doesn't basically make themselves the guarantor of the project. And so I guess I just wanted to like take one more moment to discuss what sort of situations would that occur in? Why wouldn't the landowner give sign off? If they don't give sign off, what sort of applicant is that? Or what sort of relationship does the applicant have to the landowner? And, you know, I'm really in favor of trying to not impose more financial obligations frankly on small cultivators. But I just, you know, I also, we have to look out for the county's financial interests too. So I just wanted to maybe pause on that one.
Melanie, oh, you want to speak, Director?
Well, I don't know if that was a question, but I do appreciate the comment because it is something that perhaps I have not addressed well in this presentation. And you have really scratched down to the core of what this is trying to do is when there is, I'll say, a broken relationship between a property owner and an applicant, this at least gives an applicant an avenue to go forward. And there are too many times where we are confronted with applicants and property owners who are not functioning in a cohesive manner, shall we say. And so this is the alternative that was developed to provide those applicants that ability to continue to cultivate when they've got a lease, but an unwilling property owner.
Thank you, Director. Melanie, you have your hand up. I have no idea what that's about.
That's Brian. That was Brian.
Okay. Melanie, go ahead.
Oh, great. Thank you. For me, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. For me, it really removes corruption. So, you know, there are many different forms of disagreements between landowners and, you know, between people. But it also does eliminate some of the avenues to corruption. So you could have a situation, for example, where, you know, I won't sign off unless you give me a percentage or, you know, there are a lot of variations on that. But I do see it as a positive overall and I don't really see how it would harm the county in any way. And of course, the main concern that we all have and I think that we all agree on is that it really promotes the smaller farmers, which is what we really are counting on here in this county is carrying us forward, given that we do have the genetics. We do have the appellation, we have the name and we're competing, you know, we're trying not to compete with other counties and other states that have the market and have the policies and the land and the climate to grow large-scale cannabis. So on this question, I really see it as removing just corruption and difficulty.
Thank you. Brian, I know you tried to get in there and we couldn't understand a word you were saying. So I'm going to give you another opportunity to say whatever it is you were going to say.
Sure. Been having difficulty with the internet connection today. So my opinion was that I don't have a problem leaving the bond item as an option. It's been made clear by staff that that may be one avenue that could be pursued if the landowner wasn't willing to sign the agreement or they didn't want to pay upfront. I don't see a reason why it can't be left as one alternative as long as there are many other alternatives, which there appear to be.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Let's remember, we do have a motion and a second on the table, so we're going to have to address that. Mike Newman has a question.
I had a question regarding that. If that's, the bond is taken away, that option and the surety, you know, or just having the cash upfront, is that part of what we're talking about? And then number two, what if there wasn't something there? What is the most tax that would be needing to be paid? And what is the mechanism right now if it is not paid? Is that revoked and then the county's left holding the bag for that one season, I guess, for that one time? I'm just trying to find out why and some repercussions on these small farmers because that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about our major growing areas and commercial use as much.
Go ahead, Director.
I'm not sure that this really is just applicable to small farmers. Frankly, the small farmers are probably homesteaders who are the property owners. And so they're going to be responsible for their taxes. This could be a grower that's growing 20,000 square feet on leased property. And so if they're doing outdoor, that would be slightly over $20,000. And if they're growing indoor, that would be slightly over $40,000. And so one person brought up that we can not permit. And one of the things I want to remind the Commission of is that there really is no renewal of these permits. The thing that the ordinance requires is that cultivator allow an annual inspection. And as long as that annual inspection is held, then the permit is in good standing. We need to revoke a permit if somebody didn't pay their taxes. And so that is an entirely different process to go through. And as I think the same speaker brought up, that taxes are paid the year after the cultivation is actually done. And so, you know, there is a bit of a discontinuity there in terms of make, well, I don't like to think that anybody won't pay their taxes, but there are a percentage of people who are currently not paying their taxes and that's a reality. I think we're at about, I want to say 72% of taxes being paid.
When you say revoke, what's the process? How long does it take to revoke a permit then?
Well, so normally the process is, is that it would first come to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission would make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. It's actually the Board of Supervisors that revokes a permit. So that's at least a two to three month process.
Ronnie, I see you have your hand up.
Give us another question. Is there just currently no mechanism for unpaid taxes to get a lien on the parcel, the property? For unpaid taxes?
That's the thing we're struggling with is frankly, is it the property owner who is responsible for paying the taxes? If the property owner will accept that responsibility, then everything is fine. If it's an applicant. And there are situations right now where applicants have grown their crop and have left the property, moved to another property and left the tax obligation with the property owner. And so one of the things that this does is it makes the property owner like aware upfront of the importance of making sure that there is a good relationship with the, between the grower and the property owner.
Noah, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're really clear about this situation. It only applies, it doesn't apply if it's the applicant who is the landowner. And it also doesn't apply if it's the applicant who has the landowner's sign off to sort of bottom line the tax liabilities. It really only applies in these situations where, as the Director put it, there's kind of a broken relationship between the applicant and the property owner. And I honestly think we should be wary of those situations. I think where there are those situations, we are more likely to see non-compliance, non-accountability to neighbors and other kinds of issues. And so to the extent that having the bond requirement encourages an applicant and a landowner to just get together on the same page, I don't actually see that we should worry about that, frankly. I also just want to flag that one of the things that we did talk about that's a totally separate issue on this ordinance is whether we should remove the requirement that there have been a house in place by December 31st, 2016. Like the question, to me, the larger question that we were discussing and that I think, you know, Commissioner O'Neill brought up and I think a couple of us kind of inclined to agree with her is that we shouldn't really bias this ordinance towards just the people who were there before 2016. I'm not, I mean, we can make that choice, but I'm not sure that we are in agreement on that point. And finally, I just wanted to be really clear. And maybe Director Ford can clarify. How do the Measure S tax obligations apply to the small farmer, the small cultivator ordinance? Are they the same as larger cultivators or are they exempt from Measure S? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So working backwards, relative to the Measure S, there is no differentiation. It's just a matter of the square footage that's subject to testing. So a small farmer would be subject to Measure S and a larger cultivator would too. I'd like to reiterate something, though, if I could, that Ms. Adler brought up earlier, which is part of the thing that we've attempted to do with this and the reason for the existing development. Those are, maybe the date's incorrect. But it's that this intended to allow cultivation in the area that's already disturbed. And so that's usually includes a homestead. And so to encourage people to develop houses and develop cultivation sites gets into a different kind of environmental dynamic that really doesn't qualify for what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to streamline this, minimize environmental concerns, minimize biological concerns. So that hopefully CDW doesn't have as many concerns. And that's really what we're trying to do. And if you were to take that out, you have taken away the heart of what this does.
Okay, and if I can just jump in, Director Ford. I appreciate you sort of clarifying that if we take away the date requirement that it preexists December 2016, we basically open up a big can of sequo worms. Is that what you're saying?
Well, at that point, it becomes like any other permit. So it's the same level of environmental review as any other permit. You're exactly right. That's well put.
That was a good point brought up. Thank you. So I see no more hands up and we have a motion and a second on the table right now. So Melanie, you were the motion. I think, are we going to leave the bond issue in or not? I'll let you address that in your motion.
I guess I just have one more question for the Director. In light of what we've discussed tonight, would you still have it in there?
Which component would we still have in there?
Both. I'm talking about the bond.
So in terms of the bond and the cash surety, yes, they are needed options from our perspective.
Is that a cheer question, Melanie?
Yeah, it does. I mean, I do have a bit of hesitation now that I've heard further explanation on it. I don't really see it having environmental consequences, though, so much. So I'd say we can go ahead and leave it in and then see how the vote goes down. Or I'm also, you know, willing to change it if other Commissioners want to take one or one of them out. Maybe Commissioner O'Neill has can weigh in on it.
I'm fine with the explanation as long as it's not mandatory to have a bond on a landowner that's growing on their own property. If it's what you explained, a situation which, you know, I guess unfortunately does happen where someone might grow and then just take off, leave the county and the landowner, then it's an option, it's not a mandatory requirement. If it's the landowner that's growing or if they've taken that responsibility. So I guess this is to catch the people that aren't very honest.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I have, I feel like kind of taking it out, actually. Even though I still like it in there for the anti-corruption side of it. I think we're looking at what's really small numbers in terms of who might benefit from it, who isn't someone who might be likely to just be causing difficulty or not paying taxes or what have you. And there are avenues in terms of anti-corruption, other avenues that are outside of planning. And so I think I'd like to, what I'll do is I will change the motion to remove the condition.
If I'm correct, that's what the motion was originally was?
No, it's to staff recommendation. The bond and surety provisions will remain in.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So just to be clear, Melanie, you're basically recommending that or you're moving that we go with the staff recommendation without changes? Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct.
And is the second?
Totally, far and by me.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion about that? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bongio.
Yes.
Commissioner Telegrini. Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman. Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner McAver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for a long time. So right now, we're past when we normally would take a break. So we're going to take a small break, say about 10 minutes. So we're going to take a small break, say about 10 minutes and then we'll come back and we will tackle the big one of the night, I think. All right. Thank you. Welcome back to the meeting. We have two more items before us and a lot of people, it looks like want to comment. So we're going to move this fast and we're going to allow two minutes per speaker on this. From this point out, we have 60 attendees that want to speak. So to help expedite things, we're going to give two minutes. That's to, to keep it rolling. So with that, Cliff, I think you're giving a staff report, I hear.
Thank you, members of the commission. Again, my name is Cliff Johnson with the Planning Department. I'll be presenting this project. Going to go ahead and share my screen if I could. And start the slideshow. Please let me know if you're not seeing the slide. So this project is.
Slide.
Not seeing the slide. Let me, I'm sorry.
And this project is the Adessa Organics LLC conditional use permit. I'm sorry, I didn't say that before.
Sure thing. So are you seeing the slide now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So this project is what's referred to as the Adessa Organic Conditional Use Permits. I'm going to try to go through this presentation pretty fast. You've already seen it at least twice, I believe. So this is a series of conditional use permits to authorize a new mixed light cultivation of 86,400 square feet of cannabis in the Maple Creek area. Drying would occur on site in an existing barn structure. Additional processing is proposed to occur offsite at a licensed facility. The applicant estimates a maximum of 20 employees would be required. And they are proposing to use a van pool that would pick up the employees at their place of residence every day. Powers proposed to be provided by generators and solar power. And I do want to mention that the county has proposed a mitigation measure in the ISMND for 80% of their power needs to be sourced from renewable energy. Irrigation needs would be 1.9 million gallons. They're proposing that from rainwater catchment in a series of two rainwater catchment ponds that would total approximately 4.3 million gallons. Two greenhouses are proposed to encompass the 86,400 square feet of mixed light cannabis. The applicant is proposing to phase that in. So the first phase would consist of the, the same square footage, but in either full sun outdoor or temporary hoop houses with light depth. I do want to note that all of the conditions of approval and mitigation measures would apply to all phases of the project from the beginning of operation. The project was first heard on August 6th at the Planning Commission meeting. That was continued to request CDFW to provide, provide comments. It was continued again at the August 20th hearing. And my understanding is that CDFW staff is in attendance today and hopefully can address those comments. The, I, I want to acknowledge a very large amount of public comments that we received. I did go over a number of those at the last commission meeting. They tend to fall into three general categories. The first would be in opposition to the project primarily due to the proposed large amount of diesel use that the project is, is proposing to use. So I do want to point out that the project, when submitted to the county, estimated that over 135,000 gallons of diesel would be required if 100% of their power was generated by the diesel generators. With the mitigation measure of 80% to be required to be generated by renewable sources, that lowers the amount of diesel to approximately 27,000 gallons per year. The second comments tend to be also opposed to the project, but really focusing on the fact that they believe that a, a project of this size and scale is not appropriate for the Maple Creek area. And then thirdly, there are a number of comments that have been submitted that are in support of the project. One particular comment letter I did want to point out to you is one that came in, we received this morning from the North Coast Regional Land Trust. They generally have the same concerns that have been raised by the other commenters, but they do bring up one additional concern that hasn't been raised before, which is the potential of the project to introduce sudden oak death to the area. So in looking at that concern, we do feel that that's going to be a very difficult thing to quantify. You know, what sort of impact that actually the project could cause, could bring that onto the site. So just wanted to highlight that for you. Want to just reorient the commission to where this project is. This is the Maple Creek areas, just basically showing an overview of the central part of the county. Project site itself, approximately eight miles south of the Maple Creek Bridge. And then this shows the private access drive, which would be approximately 1.1 miles leading to the Desa project site. This here is a site plan. You can see that they are proposing two large greenhouses, approximately one acre each, just under. In the center of the site plan here, you can see the existing agricultural buildings. They're proposed to use that for drying and processing as well as agricultural storage to develop some ADA parking and a new ADA accessible bathroom. The new primary pond would be here. Solar is proposed to go just north of the proposed greenhouses. And the secondary pond would be just west of that. I do want to point out the existing pond here and the new access road that leads to the proposed primary ponds. Our understanding from CDFW staff, who we did have a chance to meet with last week, is that their comment on including the, most of the LSAA projects really stems from, and, and I'm sure they can clarify here, but it really stems from this pond that LSA would include removal of because of the relation to this culvert that's proposed for this new road and the proximity to that pond. So staff does continue to believe that because the pond is not required to be removed for this project, that there is no nexus to including that in the environmental documents. This here is going to just show an aerial view of the site. You can kind of see where the two greenhouses would go, the proposed primary ponds and existing agricultural storage buildings. Those, I, I want to focus on these here because one of the comments that have been raised both by CDFW and some of the commenters is the concern about habitat fragmentation. After discussing this with CDFW, our understanding is that that concern is primarily due to the more intensive use of these existing buildings that would occur as a result of the project having up to 20 employees that are, are, you know, using this area, also parking and then using the proposed restroom facility and the proposed new primary access, or sorry, access drive to the primary pond, that those would potentially fragment the existing oak woodland habitat. So wanted to address or just point out that environmental review was completed. We did, the county did prepare an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. There is a number of public comments that expressed the concern that the county did not conduct an environmental review of this project. And perhaps those are intended to suggest that an EIR should be required. However, the county did go through the Sequa review process and circulated this initial study mitigated negative declaration on July 1st. It included 22 mitigation measures. I'm not going to go into all of them here. Let's just list some of them. But I did want to highlight two in particular. The first one is a mitigation measure, ENE 1, which was, is for renewable energy generation standards. It states that the applicant shall ensure a minimum of 80% of project electrical energy is generated by renewable sources. It shall be accomplished through the use of solar arrays on site with generator for backup. Alternatively, the project connects into the local grid and obtain electrical energy from a local utility, providing power generated from up to 80% renewable sources. So as I mentioned previously, the project when first submitted was estimating 135,000 gallons of diesel could be required if 100% of the power was generated by the diesel generators. The applicant had proposed to phase in solar where after, I believe it was five years, they'd be generating up to 50%. The county believed that that was still a, a, a potentially significant impact because of that use of, of diesel generators. And so we did apply this mitigation standard. So I really wanted to highlight that because you will find that a large number of the public comments raise that concern about diesel generators here.
Hey, Cliff, Mr. Johnson, sorry, this is Noah. Noah, I just wanted, I appreciate you highlighting this. What is the timeframe requirement for the phasing in of that 80% renewable energy?
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Levy, that's a really good question. So the, all of the mitigation measures and operational conditions, including this one, would be required at the beginning of operation. So beginning of operation of all phases of the project. So if they do the first phase with full sun outdoor and, or temporary hoop houses with light depth, they would still be required to meet this mitigation measure of 80%.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Also wanted to just point out another mitigation measure here. We talked about this a little bit last, at the last commission meeting. County staff was sort of struggling to understand what CDFW's comment regarding the mitigation measure for bullfrog infestation was. After discussing that with them, we are proposing a substitute, a substituted mitigation measure. That would be what you would see here. Basically what it's doing is adding the requirement that fencing shall be installed around the perimeter of the rainwater catchment ponds in a manner to prevent bullfrogs from entering the pond areas. And the fencing shall be developed in consultation with CDFW to prevent American bullfrogs from getting access to the pond areas. We believe that that substitution of this mitigation measure would be more effective. And you will notice in the draft resolution prepared for the Planning Commission, Alan, sorry, Commissioner Bongio, did you have a?
No, I'm sorry. There was a. Apologize.
No problem. So we are suggesting that the commission adopt a resolution which would include a finding that the substituted mitigation measure is more effective and would not cause a significant impact on the environment by itself. So want to get to the recommendation that's in the staff report, which is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration to make the findings for approval, including that the substitution mitigation measure is more effective and to adopt the resolution approving the proposed Desa project. Based on the Planning Commission discussion over the last two meetings, staff has prepared an alternative resolution, which would be to deny the project. Much of the discussion by the commission was focused on the question of whether this area is appropriate for a project of the size. Particularly, the concern was raised about the project's potential to adversely harm the existing physical aesthetic and environmental character of the community, even if it does comply with the ordinance and will not have an adverse impact pursuant to Sequo. And so there isn't an alternative resolution in your staff report based on that discussion. This would be based on the fact that because this is a discretionary permit, the commission is required in, if, if the project were to be approved, to find that the project would not have an adverse impact on their public health, safety and welfare. And it's important to understand that the concept of the public welfare is really pretty wide, widely encompassing and includes the community's values. And so if the commission does decide that this project would adversely impact those community values, it is potentially appropriate to deny the project based on having an adverse impact to the public welfare. So with that, I just wanted to turn it back to the commission and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for staff?
We just had a big conversation about, you know, having to not let people build new homes and have a small family grow because it would have an adverse impact on the environmental. And now we're talking about a, a grow that's 43, the size of 43 of these small units that we just couldn't, you know, bring ourselves to approve, even though it could have been increasing home construction and that would create other jobs in our county. But now we want to start approving large-scale new grows that would have environmental impacts that would be far, I think, greater than these smaller ones that we just didn't want to approve. So I, I'm, I'm really confused because it's like, we don't want to encourage it, but then we do want to encourage it. I, I really have a problem with this back and forth.
Anyone else? Questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna open this up to the public and I have a feeling we're gonna have a lot of participants. I'm going to give two minutes to the speakers. So let's go to attendees. And the first one is, I'm going to assume that's Friends of the Mad River. It's friends. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, well, understanding that the applicant has been engaged in this since buying the land three or four years ago, I respectfully request that you deny this project or at a minimum require an EIR. It's very clear that there will be tremendous habitat fragmentation associated with the traffic. Golden eagles are especially sensitive to human activities, but I want to raise a couple of specific points. The first one is that my lay reading of the general plan would require that the Neyland Volunteer Fire Department write a letter instead of CAL FIRE because that's their sphere and that's the district. I don't see a letter from this 12-person volunteer fire department. Instead, we have one from CAL FIRE. And CAL FIRE is only fully, fully equipped five months out of the year and only when they're not called elsewhere like they are now. As far as the sudden oak death, I find that really amazing what Mr. Johnson just said because we have submitted sudden oak death comments since the beginning. And it exists. We know where it exists. There's absolutely no evaluation of the risks or the vectors of driving through a lot of wet weather territory where we know it exists. As far as the solar goes, 12,000 square feet of solar panels that are ground-based and batteries, there is no evaluation at all of the impacts of that. And these impacts are well-known. Solar's great, but they have impacts. Where are they? So this gets to the cumulative impacts. All they do is mention a couple of other grows, one of which is even bigger than this one. That's Mad River Estates, closer to the Eagles, right next door. The possibility of doubling this project is clear throughout. Where are?
You gotta wrap it up.
Okay, sorry. Where are the maps that shows us the GIS layers of all the permits in the areas? We don't have any cumulative impacts evaluation here. So thank you very much for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker is Public 3018. You there? 3018? Seeing none, we'll move to the next speaker, which is 6686. You there, 6686? Unmute yourself by hitting star six. Okay. Next caller would be Sita Zarkowski.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, I also wrote in a letter, but I just want to speak a little bit further. Hi, yes, I also wrote in a letter, but I just want to speak a little bit further. I am here in support of the proposed project for Adessa. I would like to remind everybody that we are currently living in an unprecedented global pandemic with no end in sight. And it's imperative to keep in mind that across our country, record numbers of people are unemployed, our economy is tanking, and small businesses are dying. This is a time in which we should all welcome anyone to come forward with job opportunities and a business plan that actually contributes to saving our economy. The applicant is a young female entrepreneur who has spent countless dollars and years dedicated to jumping through every hoop the county has put in front of her. She has proven to be undeniably diligent in her efforts to make her business entire legal and legitimate to minimize the impacts to the environment around her. She displays clear intentions to adhere to the continually evolving rules and regulations for the cannabis industry. To maliciously continue denying permits to honest entrepreneurs taking the long, expensive legal route is only going to push growers to forego the process to licensing and fall black, back to the black market where there is zero accountability, regulation, and certainly no revenue being generated for our county. And, you know, to address the concern about extra traffic, extra traffic, thirteen years ago, I personally lived across the river or from the swimming hole in which you all spoke about previously. Currently, my brother lives in Maple Creek, and I have actually gone to the site where Adessa is proposed. And I would like to say that during the warmer months, that road is crowded by reckless drivers and illegally parked vehicles visiting that swimming hole. Those trespassers, they travel on unfamiliar rural roads that Maple Creek residents, pets, and wildlifes are then put at risk. The noise-
You have to wrap it up.
Okay.
Be fair to everybody.
Real pollution, trash left everywhere, causing accidents, and that is far more of an environmental concern to Maple Creek and the Mad River than a strictly regulated and well-maintained grow. There is really no point to continue to deny the Adessa project, and I certainly would hope that everybody takes into consideration personal impacts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please, it's Greg Williston. You there, Greg? Okay, next caller then, Elizabeth Finger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Hi, I appreciate that there's a forum in these times to make comments. I am someone who, given the, what I believe is the right context, is certainly a proponent for legal cannabis cultivation. I don't believe that this project meets what I consider the appropriate criteria. The cumulative impacts on the Mad River drainage and the Maple Creek area biologically and with other issues that have been addressed by others such as road safety. The last commenter said how crowded the roads are and in the summer months when people are going to the swimming hole, that does happen. Then you add this project in, you need to consider the cumulative impacts of the additional traffic on the road, safety concerns, degradation of the road. I have lived on the Fickle Hill Ridge for thirty-five years, have gone, spent a fair amount of time in the Maple Creek area to propose the use of diesel, being stored on site, it being used there as part of the operation, and particularly the hauling of diesel over poorly maintained, windy, narrow rural roads on a regular basis, to me seems like a real recipe for a potential disaster on the safety aspect and also on the environmental aspect. So I respectfully ask that this project be denied at a-
You have to wrap it up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I respectfully ask that you deny the project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Greg Williston.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I'm Greg Williston, I'm a principal and part owner of SHN Engineers and Geologists. I've been working with Laura on this project since June 2016. I want you to know that this is a good, clean project and it has been well-betted for four years. I don't frequent these meetings, but this is a, this project is a good one, and it concerns me that it has not been approved at the last two meetings. My client Laura has willingly worked hard to meet all the requirements or requests thrown at them. They are good people, they did not proceed without permits while waiting, and I believe that they will remain good stewards of their land. I heard concerns about sensitive habitat and special status species in the past. SHN has over six hundred person hours spent just on biology, botanical, and sensitive habitat identification alone to protect it from this development. CDFW has been on site with at least three different scientists, spending several days spanning over two years, combining for this site issues. It has all been acknowledged and shown not to be significant per CEQA. I have heard words precedent-setting. I don't see that it's precedent-setting in any way, and projects are approved in the Hummel County Hills all the time. Your staff has read over twenty reports specific to this project and determined that it can be built without any significant issues that cannot be willingly mitigated. Director Ford has even visited the site personally and reviewed Cliff's assessment of all of our reports. Listen to your staff and trust them. They've worked hard on this one for four years. You have, you've had a month to review all twenty-plus reports yourself, and I assume that you did so that all your questions are answered. And if you didn't, then listen to your staff. This project can be precedent-setting, it's your opportunity to reward good behavior this time. Choose to make that public statement.
Thank you. Next caller is Public 3053. Did we already do that?
Good evening, Thomas Mulder, I just want to clarify that you can hear me?
Yes, Thomas.
So usually cannabis projects, I just, I think you guys are aware, I don't comment on cannabis projects just because it's cannabis, it should be approved, so I just want to be clear on that. I'm, I'm calling to ask you questions. This project, honestly, I didn't pay much attention to it, but it's raising a lot of concerns to me, mainly the generator use. I want to talk, let's talk about generator use. I mean, we've, we've sat here last week and you put stipulations on a project for an EU 2000 for existing cultivation that already used that, that was in the baseline study for CEQA. So now let's talk CEQA now. This is a new proposal with new generator use and massive amounts of fuel consumption. I did hear today in the report that they were talking about putting a solar array, but I didn't hear anything about an EIR, EIR report for that solar array. So if we're talking about CEQA and talking about protecting the environment, I think you guys need to ask yourselves, have those things been taken into consideration? I, I would, it's something just really to be considerate of. Another thing I was looking at is, I would like to see on all applications that we require all financially interested parties, like when you apply for a state license, so that way it can be disclosed to the public. I just, I mean, you see a corporation name, I think any corporation that's before you, there should be disclosure of all parties that will be financially privy to that business. You guys have a lot before you tonight, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Next caller, Moto G6 Play.
Hello there, I'm completely against this project for one reason. The twenty employees and the van pool, it's extremely hard to get deliveries up into the remote areas here. How are you gonna pick up twenty in one day and get them to work on a timely manner? It's not possible within our county. Secondly, we've had many cultivators who have been denied. Can you hear me or am I getting feedback?
You're breaking up, but we're hearing you. Keep going.
Okay. We, we have plenty of cultivators with pre-existing who have been denied or abated with less environmental impact, which is very disturbing because this project can be done without greenhouses than just in the ground alone, but they're proposing a greenhouse. So, the, the thing that I want to say is, I'm a little shocked that Director John Ford went and visited this project when I've tried to get him on my, on the phone for my project multiple times. So why is the county so interested in your grow operation, but yet they don't take any time to go after the past cultivators who are pre-existing cultivators and work with them to get them compliant? That's my biggest complaint about this. We're working for a new company rather than going after all the old people who have been in this county, living, working, and paying for all our businesses within the community to survive. That's what we're, that's the difference here. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Speaker. Next is Jason Flanders.
Good evening, Jason Flanders, ATA Law Group. We submitted written comments two weeks ago, and tonight's staff report responds to some of them. One, it says we got the rainwater capture amount wrong, that it's four million gallons and not six million gallons. But the staff report on page seven tonight also says, quote, "The total water that will be collected by the rainfall catchment is approximately six million, two hundred and one thousand gallons annually. There's no analysis of what it means for the local environment to take this amount of water out of the system." Staff says the capture of four million gallons, not six, would be about, quote, "zero point zero zero one three percent of the total runoff in the Mad River watershed," quote. But this ratio approach was rejected by the court and Kings County Farm Bureau because it provides no analysis of the project's environmental effects here, including impacts to vegetation, oak, habitat, water courses, water users, all that will be adversely affected by taking six million gallons of water every year, and this will be most acute during dry and drought periods, which the NIGDAC doesn't evaluate. It's a hundred feet from the creek and it should be referred to State Water Board Division of Water Rights. Why all this excess water capacity? No explanation's given. Only two of four acres are being developed, but a full build-out should be assessed. The staff report responds to our comments now to say that portions of the stream bed alteration agreement that are relevant to the project were part of the NIGDAC, but that's not evident at all in the NIGDAC, which states that the pond, quote, "and all of the other maintenance and repair actions identified in the LSAA are separate from the Adessa project for purposes of CEQA because they have independent utilities." So it's not clear that the NIGDAC included any of the LSAA, but it should include the road construction and, as CDFW notes, the work related to Pond PO1. So to conclude, CEQA's fair argument standard is a very low bar. If any evidence in the record supports a fair argument that one or more significant effects may occur, an EIR is required. Here, the project's increased road travel and diesel use will increase fire hazards and air pollution. Roadwork and operations will impact water courses that are already impaired by sediment, possible sediment death, wildlife corridors fragmented-
You gotta wrap it up.
-and golden eagle nest may very well be disrupted. Six million gallons of water, an EIR is needed to assess all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next caller is La Gloria Ranch.
Hi, my name's, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name's Adam Alnquist, I have a smaller ranch on Maple Creek Road. I just want to say that I am in full support of this Adessa project. It seems that they are, have jumped through all of the hoops that were laid out in front of them. I know that with these larger conditional use permits, there are increased environmental concerns that I am not as familiar with in this project. As far as traffic on Maple Creek Road, I don't even see the van pool to be necessary at all. There are plenty of loggers that are not required to van pool, there are dangerous logging trucks, there's fuel being hauled into the hills daily for logging operations. And to put these requirements on a, what appears to be a state-of-the-art cannabis project on a large ranch by young people that are passionate about doing this project right, just seems overburdened some. So, I wish them luck and I hope that you'll approve their project. Thanks for taking my comment.
Thank you. Next caller is Public 7751. You there, 7751? Star six, unmute your phone.
Hi, this is Ian Schatz. I grew up in Maple Creek since 1976, my family still lives there, and I'm just calling to say that I do not support this project. I encourage the commission to deny this project, and you, you have plenty of reasons in front of you and the full reporting of this project.
Thank you, Ian.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Next caller, Shanti Zarkowski.
Hi, this is Shanti Zarkowski. Hi, wonderful, thank you, thank you for hearing me. I would first like to divert to the, one of the previous commenters, a few commenters back, who seemed a little just upset that he has not been approved. I would just like to say that Laura has, could have been growing a league this entire time. She's choosing to go amongst things the proper way because she cares about the community, she cares about the industry, and she wants to give back properly. She serves on the school board in Maple Creek, she cares about the community that she lives in. As a resident of Humboldt County for a very long time, I'm super grateful for our county's cash crop and for the dedicated farmers who are so willing to rise with the roosters and put in the long, honest, and hard days of work to keep our economy going. It's undeniable that the, that the cannabis agriculture has been our county's saving grace through sessions, and so I really do urge you to come together to do what is best for our county, that we all love. Regardless of where all of us stand on this project, it's undeniable that all of us do love our county, and that's important. We should be working together to do what is best for our county, not apart from each other. We need to support-
Thank you, Speaker.
-this woman and any other grower who is willing to put forth the effort to obtain their cultivation license instead of doing things illegally. Like, it's, it is so important that we are in this together because the cannabis industry is not going to, it's not going anywhere. So would you rather have somebody that's tried to-
Two minutes are up, you have to stop now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is Tony Cagliotti. Hey, glad, I'm sorry if I-
That's okay, I'm used to it. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. My wife and I have raised our family out here, we've been out in Maple Creek area for twenty-five years. And years ago, we were part of a community group that tried to get improvement on our roads. During that process, it was clear that an eighty thousand pound logging truck, a single one of those, has a larger impact on our roads than a car. Car has significantly no impact on the roads. I am, like I said, a thousand percent in approval, seeking that you approve this project. I, I think that the, the neighbors in Maple Creek have demonstrated at a previous meeting how much we care and how much we are willing to hold our neighbors, our neighbors to account for doing things right. I know Laura and Scott, they do in fact want to do things right, and I would encourage you to approve this project for all the right reasons. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Next caller, Patrick Solory.
Good evening. I represent the applicant in this matter and specifically referencing, I'm addressing Friends of the Mad River comments. Jason Flanders submitted a letter back in August nineteenth, raising basically a scattershot of issues, and county staff very ably responded to all those concerns and demonstrated that they were without merit. Friends of the Mad River then, apparently I just learned, sent an email yesterday transmitting documents about the Mad River Estates project and essentially trying to- about the Mad River Estates project and essentially trying to conflate those two projects together. And, uh, they're not. They're completely separate projects. And there is frankly, an order of magnitude difference in scale between the two projects. The Mad River Estates project is about 850,000 square feet versus our project, which is 86,000 square feet. But specifically, but they raise the issue of the Mad River Estates to, to, um, implicate the issue of cumulative impacts. And we agree cumulative impacts should be addressed and they were addressed. And the MND directly analyzed the cumulative impacts on pages 102 to 104 of the MND and a variety of issues. And in fact, the county delayed release of the MND specifically to get CDFW concerns about cumulative impacts. CDFW, four years, raised concerns about Golden Eagle cumulative impacts. And so as a result, there were numerous protocol level studies between 2017 and 2019, directly addressing this issue. All of those studies were summarized in December of last year, submitted to the county, forwarded to CDFW. And as you all know from reading the CDFW letter, that issue is put to bed. It's done. There is no issue about golden eagles. There is no issue about cumulative impacts. And as, um, Greg indicated.
Gotta wrap it up.
Sure. Um, it's fundamentally unfair to deny a project because people disagree with the county's existing cannabis ordinance. If you want to change the ordinance going forward, that's fine, but it's fundamentally unfair to deny this project because of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, next speaker is Danielle. Are you there, Danielle? Unmute yourself.
Hi, uh, this is actually Rama. I, um, I live in Maple Creek. I've lived here about 12 years and I own the property by the river where everybody swims. And I would say that, uh, their project would not be the issue with traffic out here. If you would drive from Maple Creek School up to their project, it's unbelievable what they have done in the last five years logging wise. So I don't see how growing a, growing a crop, especially organically, could put such an effect on the environment as say the logging or the 100 people to come out to my property and swim every day. This year, there's been four logging accidents on our road with logging trucks. But, um, I'm in full support of their project and I hope, uh, I hope they get it. Cause I would think after four years of going after it, somebody should have said, oh, terrible spot, instead of waited four years and all this time and money. So good luck, guys. I'm rooting for you. That's all I got. Thank you.
Daniel. Next caller is Maple Creek resident. Unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Me and my family also are residents out in Maple Creek and are in full support of the Adessa project. Known Laura and Scott for, since they moved out here and they immediately reached out and were very excellent neighbors. And it's heartening to see young families moving out into the area. As we're starting to start our own family, we are looking for other people to breathe new life into this, you know, what feels like kind of a stagnating community as the, you know, properties change over. So they have shown nothing but the utmost respect for doing, going about this the right way. And, um, uh, you know, have an ethic for stewardship of the land and the future in mind. And her involvement and their involvement in the community and the school, I think reflects all that. So they absolutely deserve and have put in the time. And I think have a, uh, a long-term project. I know their goals are long-term community improvement out here like ours are. And I mean, yeah, don't even talk about roads because it's, it's ridiculous. The trucks hammer down our intersection at 3:00 AM every day during the summer when they're cutting and it's, it's ridiculous. So, uh, it's a great project and please do honestly consider approving it because it deserves to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any more public callers? I see no more hands. There is one more. 7224. 7224 on, there you go.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I've been a Humboldt County resident for my whole life. And I do not support any project of this size, especially with massive generator use and 27,000 gallons of fuel that's going to be delivered. That's just mind boggling. And so I do not support this project. Good day.
Thank you. Uh, Public 7454. Unmute yourself.
Ken Sawaski, thank you for my opportunity to speak. Um, uh, I, I'm against this project for a lot of reasons. They've already been spoken, most of them. Uh, it's a new project, new project. And why would, I mean, unless they bought the generators, there's no reason why they wouldn't be doing something other than generators. This is, I, I've just drove by coming back and forth. A wonderful herd of elk, wildlife corridor I'm worried about. Has there been an elk study? These elk are coming around in big herds up there. I put up a $2,500 reward when, uh, three of them were killed in the Maple Creek area. So they are of concern to me and the corridors they need are of concern to me. Mother Nature's kind of sending a message. She's doing a, the sudden oak, uh, really bothers me. Cumulative impacts bother me. Um, allegedly there was a threat of litigation. Instead of threat of litigation, I highly recommend you deny, kick the can to the soups. Uh, you just passed, uh, a wonderful thing where the small growers, well, how many jobs are we creating there? I don't know, maybe 200 jobs versus this. It just seems that we're throwing Mother Nature under the bus here a little bit. And so I, I'm going to stay against this one. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this particular topic.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, Ron Wilson.
Good evening. Uh, I've spoken before and I'm still concerned about the water quality of Cowan Creek being as our property is immediately adjacent downstream of that. And even though the plan seems to spell out a lot of specifics as far as, or being organic, I don't necessarily, and maybe it's a question is I don't necessarily see where they are bound to that. And my concern is the possible introduction of chemicals or diesel or anything into that creek. And another statement in a letter written to the board, it was stated that the site was only visible from Green Diamond and their own property. It is maybe not a big issue, but it is also visible from our property. But that was conveniently left out. And I am one owner and I'm not terribly concerned about that, but there were five other owners and maybe somebody should ask them if they're, and, uh, if that bothers them. But, uh, we have received virtually no contact between the development, during the development of this project. Thank you for hearing me. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Public 6686. Unmute yourself.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Leslie Doyle. I have a business in town for licensing and permitting elevated solutions. I would just like to call in tonight to show my support for the project. I feel like they have gone above and beyond and completed all necessary studies to show their impact on the environment. They have ample amount of water storage from rain catchment ponds, so they will not be affecting the water. Uh, they address all of their environmental concerns. They have mitigated and their concerns of their neighbors and addressed those. We need to be supporting business in Humboldt County and not discouraging it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan. Any other callers? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that, yes, go ahead, Megan.
Hi, yes, thank you so much for hearing my three-minute comment. I'm currently down in Monterey area taking care of my 98-year-old mother, but I've lived in Humboldt, um, for quite a long time. And based on what I'm hearing, I really have great respect for the people who have put this plan forward. It sounds like they really have done their due diligence in trying to meet the county guidelines and work with staff. The, what I'm, what I'm noticing here in Monterey is the hills have been, um, entered into by businesses, which are now burned down because of the wildfires we've had. And I always think to myself about Humboldt, we have a chance in Humboldt to maintain a biosphere. And there are very few biospheres left that are intact on this planet. Certainly within our state and within our country. We're talking about vital water supply for wildlife, which of course means for human use, uh, eventually. But we need to protect at all costs these undisturbed areas. They are genetic, uh, banks for the future. This development has no business being in that area. I respectfully ask the wonderful developer to move it closer to infrastructure that's already in place. Uh, roads, water use, uh, restroom, all of the, all of the issues that you guys have talked about tonight.
You gotta wrap it up.
I understand the staff is under pressure from a lot of development. This is not the way to build a healthy Humboldt economy. The small growing ordinance that you passed was great and that's going to decentralize this kind of impact. Thank you so much for listening to my comment.
Thank you. Any other public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment now and bring it back to the commission. I want to also note that we have, uh, two members, I believe, from, uh, California Fish and Wildlife. And if the commission has any questions for them, this is the opportunity to ask them. Yes, um, and if either of the members from California Fish and Wildlife would like to speak, feel free to speak up now and, and then we may have some questions for you.
Sure. Welcome. Uh, nice to see you commissioners. It's been some time since, uh, I've been around. My name is Mike Van Houten. I'm a senior environmental scientist with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I'm, uh, normally based in the Eureka office. Today I'm based in my house like the rest of you. Uh, these are unusual times. Um, so I had a chance today to look back at the previous commission meeting on this topic. And, um, it was, uh, discussed that our letter had, um, several inaccuracies. We, uh, met with John Ford and Cliff Johnson and discussed the letter that we authored. And, um, uh, as a result of that, we've now put together some talking points, which I'd like to deliver at this point. And then also mentioned that Scott Bauer is here as well. Uh, he has a much greater understanding of the ordinances than I do. But, uh, I am here to answer questions as well. And I, I note that there were inaccuracies, uh, in on the document itself as well that are worth discussing. So, uh, with that, I just want to, uh, rattle off this page of points. And then again, we're here to talk, uh, as you have questions. So as you know, we sent a, a comment letter, uh, on the MND, of course mitigating NIGDAC is flying into the fair argument standard. We all need to keep that in mind. Since, uh, then, uh, since we met with Director Ford and Cliff Johnson, our, uh, here is the status of our position on these issues. So kind of going from the top to the bottom of our letter, the first point was regarding deferred mitigation and the stream bed alteration agreement. Uh, this project has been long in the making and CDFW had a draft LSA stream bed alteration agreement in process that included a pond removal project that lives within the footprint of the cultivation project proposal. We believe the pond removal should have been evaluated as part of the whole project. However, since pond removal is a positive result for resources in this stream system, it is not a significant issue for CDFW. Uh, regarding mixed lake cultivation, there is ample, but not quantitative evidence, uh, demonstrating cultivators' non-compliance with the county's light pollution ordinance standards. The department stands by its recommend, recommendation that the MND should assess the potential impacts of non-compliance and include mitigation measures to ensure compliance. Regarding habitat fragmentation and oak woodlands, these topics are related. The project on its surface does not show extensive direct impacts to riparian and oak woodland habitat. However, due to its size and location within and adjacent to two streams and habitat, CDF believes there are appropriate substantial indirect impacts that have not been adequately disclosed, analyzed, or mitigated. Regarding the rainwater catchment ponds, CDFW believes in order to avoid attraction of bullfrogs and wildlife to open water, these types of storage facilities, remember we're talking about facilities here, does not have a tap. Let me see, I lost my point here. Should include fencing that excludes colonization, colonization and use, which would limit future management needs. And again, uh, Cliff addressed this early on, uh, today, which I appreciate. But I also note that, uh, we really don't want to see any wildlife in these facilities. I've been on cultivation sites where bears were in line ponds, bears pop line ponds. My point is these are facilities, they should exclude all wildlife, large or small. Uh, phasing and climate change. The county pointed out the MND includes a mitigation requiring the project to be 80% renewable on day one. If that is the case, issue is resolved. The problem with the document was that it was a little bit challenged to, challenging to discern that. And I still think the mitigation measure should say on day one, uh, if that's what, uh, the county is saying now, we're fine with it. And then our last, uh, bullet before I have two other statements is that, uh, regarding the Service Mining Reclamation Act and the rocking of the road, that's, uh, a simple recommendation to address. And, uh, we, we would like to see that addressed, meaning that any rocked roads, uh, any material used for rocking roads comes from a permitted, smart permitted site. We've had extensive illegal mining in this county and we don't want to see anymore. The elephant in the room is what I want to talk about now. There is an additional issue that is the elephant in the room the department would like to raise, the approval, the approval of large industrial cultivation sites on remote wildlands. When the ordinance and original MND were circulated, the inclusion of some additional sites like Adessa was not what the department thought was approved. The MND relies on a sighting, on sighting on prime ag soils, which most existing mapping is located in, which most of, uh, existing mapping is located in the bottom lands that are currently ag. Question for the planning commission, is this what you thought was intended? Do you want large industrial cultivation sites in remote, remote wildlands of your county? One last point, at the last commission meeting, the validity of the department's position and letter was questioned. Let me state the obvious, a letter signed by the regional manager is the department's position. And questioning that only sows seeds of doubt and rumors that degrades the process and the efforts by CDFW to provide input to the planning process. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Uh, go ahead, Noah.
Hi, um, it's, uh, it's not so much a question, although I may still have one. But I just first wanted to acknowledge a couple of things and thank Mr. Van Hatten for, for speaking, uh, here and appearing before us. I, I really, really appreciate his input. Some of the concerns that I have about this project have been resolved by these mitigations and by what Mr. Van Hatten just said. And I also want to just, you know, apologize for the comments that I made about, rumors of, of division between local DFW staff and the regional, uh, department. So, um, also since I did put it out there, uh, that I was privy to something last meeting that Epic, the, the nonprofit group that I'm, uh, that I was privy to something last meeting that Epic, the nonprofit group that I'm still a part of on its board, had, had submitted a PRA request to try to get to the bottom of that question of what the internal department discussion of this project was. I have no new information. Epic has no new information. There's nothing more to say. I just wanted to make that sort of ex parte disclosure that all I know is that there's, there's nothing more. Nothing has, no documents have been turned over yet. So there's nothing, there's nothing there. But, but more importantly, I, I, I appreciate that, that Mike said in particular that the, the concerns about climate and, and fuel use and things like that have been essentially mitigated by this, by these mitigations and also about the pond, I think. And I guess, I guess I would, just to boil all this down to a question, you know, we, we do have some, we as a community, as a commission, have some mixed feelings about a big project like this happening in a remote, special, extremely biodiversity-rich place like this. The idea has always been that by having this ordinance, we would, we would improve what was already happening. Okay, we would clean up, we would require applicants to clean up lands that had been somewhat degraded and had a detrimental effect on wildlife and biodiversity. This project is a little different because it's new. It's not cleaning up an existing site. But all that said, do you think that, you know, but there have been some things like the pond removal and relocation is a great example of this. I mean, does the department support this project? I, I'm still sort of trying to get to the bottom of whether the Department of Fish and Wildlife feels that this is a good thing to approve. It's clear that these applicants have worked hard to comply with a lot of requirements. But I think that's, that's kind of the issue that's, that's causing us heartburn. So I'd, I'd still love to hear more from the department on that core essential question. Thank you.
Sure. And I encourage Scott to jump in if he wants. You know, we're not in a position to approve or deny a project. We certainly have opinions about this project. You know, again, like I pointed out, the bottom of our, our punch list there, we were under the impression that we wouldn't see these types of projects proposed new under the existing, under these ordinances. We thought prime ag meant where it's mapped on Humboldt Web GIS, where ag is already occurring. So, you know, we live in the Sequoia world. You are the lead agency. We have opinions. We may or may not be able to make significant arguments. You know, mitigated egg deck is a mitigated egg deck. That's the, that's the middle document between the CX and the EIR. It, you know, we, we don't go there. If we did go there, our letter would be different. It would, when we make significant arguments, they're robust. We stand behind them. And, and you know it because we'll ask for things like in case, in this case, you should do an EIR. We'll say it. At least for the issues that we own. Of course, we only own a fraction of the Sequoia issues. The fuel trucks make me very nervous. They can become our issue when they go into the creek. I hope that doesn't happen. But nevertheless, we're not the approving body for this. You all are. And that's really what I can say.
Thank you, Michael. Any other questions for Michael? Scott, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, so it's back to the commission.
Hey, Scott here. No, I, I just want to say that Mike, Mike's covered all of our issues, you know? He did, he did a great job. So thank you for letting us have the time to discuss him.
Thank you both for coming to, participating tonight. I know you have better things to do, so. Appreciate it very much. All right, bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Anybody have any questions? Want to start the discussion? Go ahead, Ronnie.
I'd like to start out with a motion.
That works.
All right. I'd like to move to find the project exempt from Sequoia and to adopt the resolution denying the proposed Odessa LLC project due to its adverse impact on the public welfare for all of the previously stated reasons.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the que, oh, Noah, do you have your hand up? I thought that was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You, I, thank you. I mean, I, I appreciate it, you know, it's nine oh eight. So on a certain level, it's time to move this along to a vote. But I just wanted to put it out there. A couple of things. Because I truly, I, I feel very torn by this project. One thing is that I see this applicant and their track record as having been receptive to the mitigations that are asked of them. And those mitigations basically are driven by the ordinance, you know? So I feel a little bit like, and, and Mike Van Hatten really underscored that, that this is a little bit of a case of unintended consequences. You know, we, we wrote an ordinance. It said what situations can allow for new cultivation. We didn't, I think it's fair to say, we as a commission, as a county, didn't necessarily intend it to be in this location. But this location apparently complies. Certainly that's what he said about the Department of Fish and Wildlife perspective. As far as I can tell, although I, you know, I'm willing to be corrected on this, this applicant and the various professionals that they have working for them are willing to make modifications and have been willing to make modifications to comply with the concerns that the county has. And so I at least wanted to put on the table before we deny this. I mean, I know there's now a motion. Is that maybe there's a version of this project that has some additional mitigations that can make it a little bit more palatable to, to everybody, to the commission? I think my AirPod just died. I hope you can still hear me. But, but that's, that's what I wanted to say is that, you know, maybe, maybe we don't have to see this as a approve it or deny it. There've already been additional mitigations. There has been a certain amount of discussion of, you know, couldn't they just get the generators out altogether and make it a full sun operation? I know that changes the economics. I don't totally understand how that changes the economics, but it does. But, you know, there's been a lot of investment in this project. And I'm frankly pretty uncomfortable with just a full, full-on saying no. When as far as I can tell, these applicants have really jumped through all the hoops that our rules said they have to jump through. And, and yet we're, we're sort of uncomfortable with it because it presents a bit of a, you know, sort of an inherent contradiction in what we thought our ordinance was going to allow and what it can result in. But that, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Noah. Brian has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. I just wanted to, I guess, agree with what Noah said and say it maybe a bit more strongly. I think it's extremely inappropriate that an applicant has spent four years working on a project, countless thousands of dollars or maybe more than that. And we don't even give them the courtesy of a discussion. It's clear that people's minds are, are made up. But I feel that if a project meets all of the requirements that we, the county, have put in place, then that project should be either modified so we can feel comfortable approving it or approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mike, you have your hand up.
Yes, I was going to voice the same concerns and, and what Commissioner Levy and Mitchell have voiced, which is this project meets all of the requirements that the ordinance is asking for. And I feel uncomfortable in denying a project such as this without any other due process. They've jumped through all the hoops and the ordinance was written as it was. And, and I, I would be remiss in, in voice, in not voicing my opinion that I cannot feel good about denying this project outright.
Thank you, Mike. Melanie, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to speak also before it went to a vote so that the public is aware of how, what we're thinking on this. I have, I have a problem with denying this project as well. We, we have talked a lot about promoting small farmers, small farms, small grows. And that is important, but it's not the same thing as having a project in front of us that meets all of the requirements for the legal sequoia documents that we have. So, you know, while we are perhaps looking at modifying things for the future and we are looking at policies that promote smaller farms, that doesn't mean that we then can go ahead and just start denying larger ones that, you know, that have met all of the requirements. I mean, we have to work with what we have. I mean, the time to make those adjustments would have been before when we had that opportunity, when most of us, I think on the commission weren't here. So in my view, this project does meet all of the requirements. You know, my personal feeling is that outdoor is, is, is better. It's also cheaper, healthier, higher interbeans, all of that. I mean, but our job is, you know, to relay questions that are posed to us by the public and discuss, discuss those, but, but also importantly, to see whether it meets the, the legal requirements. And this one clearly does. As far as the environmental impacts go, it is in an area with a lot of logging. I myself have some logging experimental trials up in the area. And, you know, while those undergo their own environmental review and meet those, it's undeniable that the road impacts are going to be greater for logging than for this. So, and all of the other ones, like I said, they undergo their own review. And so that, you know, that's immaterial, that they've both met their environmental requirements. It's not really our job to compare those two industries. So I'm not in favor of denying the, the permit. Thanks.
Thank you, Ronnie. I see you got your hand up.
Well, I, I do certainly appreciate my fellow commissioners' comments on that. But I still go back to some of the early concerns with the groundwater replenishment and the concerns that the, the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District addressed. And, you know, and there are other, other environmental issues that are of concern to me. And we're kind of emphasized in the presentation by Fish and Wildlife Service tonight. Yes, we can mitigate some things, but we can't mitigate for everything. And we do, the responsibility lies with us as commission, as the planning commission, you know, to, to, to deny or to approve this permit. And I just think it is not the right place. I, I mean, I've heard it over and over and over about the industrial size of this in such a remote area and the detrimental effects it's going to have on the whole basin. I, I can't say that strongly enough.
Thank you, Ronnie. I'm going to chime in on this one like I usually do at the end. I want to disclose that I went up and drove through the area. Not on the property, but I drove Mad River or Maple Creek Road and that area. Know the area pretty well anyhow. I've been against this project from the start. There's many reasons I stated. I, I, I think it, they did a good job of, of mitigating a lot of them. But what I'm going to say is I drove through a lot of parts of this county and some of them have just been absolutely destroyed because of cannabis. I, I brought that up before. I know this is its own project, but we don't have to let happen everywhere in this county what's happened to a beautiful place called Honeydew and other places like Alder Point and Bloxburg. Now, I mean, you can just go down the list that this, this area has not yet been obliterated with hoop houses and everything else that comes with it. You know, the, the road issues in there are, are an issue. You can say they aren't, but that road is not up for the, the kind of traffic that it's getting right now. Okay, it's not up for the logging traffic, but that's a whole nother issue. So with that, you know where I stand. We have a motion and we have a second on the floor. I'm going to call for the vote. Had a lot of discussion on it. We need to get this wrapped up tonight. And unfortunately, we're not going to get to our next one because of the late hour. So with that, I would ask Suzanne to call for the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Banjua.
The motion, the motion was to deny.
Deny. That's a true point. To just be, have clarity, I'm going to ask Ronnie to state her motion.
I move to find the project exempt from Sequoia and adopt the resolution denying the proposed Odessa LLC project due to its adverse impact on the public welfare.
Thank you, Ronnie. Is the second still concur with that?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Now would you do a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Banjua.
Yes.
Commissioner Pellegrini.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Newman. Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Mitchell.
No.
Commissioner McCaver.
No.
It appears that the nodes have it four to three. So the, the project. Oh wait, no, we have a, so now we have to have another motion.
What just happened is the motion failed. So now what the commission needs to do is formulate a motion that will pass.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we close the public hearing, adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Odessa Organics LLC project pursuant to section 15074 of the state's secret guidelines. Make all the required files approval of the conditional use permit based on evidence in the staff report and adopt the resolution approving the proposed Odessa Organics LLC project subject to the recommended conditions. And I would additionally like to add one additional mitigation measure, which is that the generators are only allowed for the first two years and that they have to be fully based on renewable resources and renewable energy after two years.
I'll second.
We have a motion. Second, just have to have the motion. Seeing none, or do you have, Melanie, do you have? No, I guess you didn't. I'm sorry. So with that, Suzanne, we'll call for the vote.
Okay, Commissioner Banjua.
Hello.
Commissioner Pellegrini. Commissioner Pellegrini. Commissioner Pellegrini. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the motion carries with a four-three vote. And approve the project. So with that, that gives us, it's twenty-five after, and we are not going to have time to start the next issue, which is, I believe is going to have a lot of public input. So I'm going to ask the director what he would like to see happen. It will be continued till
Continue it till September seventeenth.
So
Need a motion on that?
Do I have a motion to continue the Humboldt County Fair Association conditional use permit to September seventeenth meeting?
Can we make a motion to both continue the Humboldt County Fair to that date as well as adjourn the meeting all in one motion?
Yes.
Is it so, so moved?
Well, we have to, we have to have a vote, though.
So seconded.
Hold on.
VNT.
Oh.
Continue to
Right. Could you, can, could you also make part of that motion to continue the VNT to a date uncertain?
That's agreeable.
So with that, we have a motion. Is there a second for that?
Yes.
We have a motion, a second. Can we have a roll call, please, Suzanne?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Would it be possible to push both of the, these two to the beginning of the agenda? Because I, I mean, I don't know if there's a hurry, if the applicants are in a hurry or not, but we've pushed one of them now twice, so I, I'm just wondering if, you know, what's happening with those?
And the director's nodding yes, so we will have those at the beginning.
Well, VNT is being continued to a date uncertain so that we can go out and meet with the public. There's, it seems to be a lot of public controversy with that right now, so we will try to work some of that, that out before it gets into the planning commission chamber. But in terms of the fair CUP, absolutely, it'll be the first thing on the agenda after the consent calendar.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That was good.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, Suzanne, roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
I, I can't hear Suzanne, but if she's asking for me, I say yes.
If she's asking for me, yes.
Yes, for Peggy.
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody has said yes. So with that, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody, and sorry about the, the Fort, the Ferndale Fairgrounds, but we're going to put you right up at the beginning next meeting, so come back next meeting. Have everybody have a good weekend. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.